Okay, welcome. Hi, I'm Jennifer McKeever, the Chair of the Charlottesville City School Board. This is the October 1st, 2020, School Board Meeting. We're offering via Zoom and many leaving livestream platforms, so welcome. I am going to now call the meeting to order. The meeting is now in order. We're going to do a moment of silence to to start off the meeting at this point, just for a moment. Okay, can I get the clerk to do a roll call of the School Board members, please?
It's Madam Chair, Mr. Bryan. Mr. Bryan. Ms. Bryson Morsberger.
Present.
Dr. Krav.
Present.
Ms. McKeever. Ms. Perrier.
Present.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
And Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome all. The first item that we're, we need some action on is the approval of the proposed agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. I don't think that was me, but sorry. And so yeah, let's go ahead and get a vote on the proposed agenda. Madam Clerk.
It's Madam Chair, Mr. Bryan.
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsberger.
Yes.
Dr. Krav.
Yes.
Ms. McKeever.
Yes.
Ms. Perrier.
Yes.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
And Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have now comments from members of the community. I, any, am I going to look to Mr. Cuomo for?
Yes, we can start by anybody who would like to just remind me if they've registered to sign up for a public comment or to raise their hand and we can go in that order. And then I'll go down our list, make sure we're not missing anybody from the registration page. I have Angela.
I'm sorry, I have the registration page as well, so.
Sure. I unmute, I've given Angel Fero the opportunity to speak, if she'd like to, if Angel would like to unmute this time.
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes ma'am, welcome.
Thank you. Dear Madam Chair and Board, thank you again for taking the time to listen to the community as well as my thoughts. And thank you teachers for all the hard work you have been putting into educating our children. A huge thank you as well to City of Promise, International Neighbors Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA for all the support they are providing students with virtual learning. Through Abundant Life Ministries, I have had the privilege of running a socially distant in-person support program for elementary students over the past four weeks. Many of our volunteers are older individuals who fall in higher risk categories, but feel the urgency of serving our children in person. I've seen many of our students working harder than they ever have to attend to lessons through screens and sit in front of those screens for multiple hours each day. Our kindergarten through second grade students have struggled greatly because of the nature of virtual learning, needing several breaks and incentives just to make it through the morning. For many across all grade levels who struggled to access an in-person curriculum, the virtual one is even less accessible. I've received multiple emails from school social workers and other individuals in the committee, uh, community wanting to help students. Sadly, we do not have the capacity to serve them all, and this is true for other community partners as well. So what is happening to these other children? Who is supporting them when phone calls, emails, and Zoom check-ins don't work? Families are struggling to balance work and support virtual learning, especially those without the privilege of working from home. Those who do not speak English as a first language and those with single parents. In only offering virtual instruction, we have significantly increased the stress families are experiencing during this pandemic and the racial unrest in our nation. Daycare providers, private schools, community partners, and volunteers have been working in person with students for several weeks now successfully. And yet our city schools cannot even serve the most vulnerable populations in person. We are failing our children in the margins once again when large inequities already exist. And so I ask how okay for city schools to request community partners serve our children in person if it is too unsafe for city school employees to serve children in person. It seems the responsibility has been shifted to organizations that often have fewer resources than our city schools. This is not okay. I'm deeply discouraged and angered by the lack of acknowledgement of those who are daily taking risks so that others can have the privilege of working remotely when discussing the reopening of schools. There may never be a time when we can make everyone feel completely safe, but we cannot allow systemic structures that have disproportionately negative impacts on Black and Brown communities to continue. I ask you to deeply consider a four-day-per-week November reopening for our pre-K through elementary learners, to also consider children of all ages whose learning needs or whose family situations make an all-virtual curriculum inaccessible, and to acknowledge that all virtual instruction still requires in-person support to be accessible to all. We can find a way and we must for the sake of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next, Mr. Cuomo?
Next, we have Chris Meyer. Chris, I've pushed that button to allow you to unmute yourself.
Hey Chris, before you start, I just want to add, I'm sorry, in the middle of Ms. Fero's, Fero's presentation, I realized I had not done the timing. And I just want to indicate that I need everybody to introduce themselves, tell me your address, and you have three minutes to make, to have your public comment. So I apologize, Chris, but I needed to remember that this time, so thank you. Go ahead.
All right, thanks everybody, and I'm not gonna presume that's directed directly at me, though.
Not at all.
Dear School Board Members, on behalf of the Charlottesville City Schools Joint PTO Reopening Fund, I would like to provide you and the community with a short update on its progress to date. The Joint PTO Reopening Fund was created to support effective teaching in a virtual environment and allows equal opportunity for each student and teacher to profitably utilize the district's mandatory nine-week virtual learning plan. The Reopening Fund partnered with the Charlottesville Area Community Foundation to administer the funding raised, the funds raised, and appreciates the support provided by Charlottesville City School staff, including Kim Powell and Denise, particularly. The Reopening Fund, again, is focused on equity and meeting the needs of the students and families during this challenging time of virtual learning. Because of this, it is designed to allocate funds received to each school based on the school's population of students receiving free and reduced school lunches. Since it started a little more than 30 days ago, the Reopening Fund has either received or has committed commitments for a total of $131,262 from 169 donors. $80,000 from the fund has already been distributed to the CCS schools, which have created dedicated committees to select expenditures. We are updating our website frequently to keep the public updated on the, on the progress. We want to thank all the parents, community members, businesses, and foundations who have supported this initiative. We, as PTOs, do plan on reviewing this initiative after spending and reporting on funds raised in order to consider whether this type of joint fundraising could be used again in the future. We wish you a constructive meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. And who's next, Pat?
Next on the list with the hand up is Richard Fira. And he can.
You have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. I feel like our nation has been exposed for not giving teachers enough respect and support and appreciation and money for the hard and important services they provide to our communities. I apologize for the role that I played with that. I also say let's start by raising property taxes so teachers can get paid substantially more, hire more teachers so we can have smaller classrooms. I'm ready to give a little more to make this a reality, and sure, others are ready to do the same. Um, with that being said, I'll be honest, I was excited to hear an in-person option was being explored for October. It sounds like that's off the table now. It also sounds like the dates for when some may go back in person keep getting pushed back to. Um, listen, if we aren't going back in person anytime soon, then let's make some necessary changes to the virtual education to make it more accessible for all of our students. I got six essential changes that I've heard from students and parents in our community. And the first one is to add synchronous night classes and weekend options for families. Number two, don't, do not overlap any of the school's synchronous schedules so that the older students can help their parents support their younger siblings with accessing the virtual education. Three is require less synchronous instruction and more off-screen asynchronous work, especially for grades K through 2. Four, if you're going to ask parents to support students with their virtual education, then provide instructions in the first language of the parents of all your students. Five, like Albemarle is doing, provide in-person school for some of the, for some of our IEP and special needs students that need it the most. CUC isn't, or CCS isn't willing to make virtual education accessible for all of its students, or it can't. Let's put everything on hold until we can have an in-person option for these folks. You know, just like we put everything on hold when we have a snow day. Last thing I'm going to say is, I've asked this last couple of times, and, and, and I'm still curious of why is Charlottesville City Schools asking community partners to work in person with students if they have declared it's unsafe to work in person with students? It feels like if this question can't be answered, then it's obvious we can have an in-person option. And I think there are teachers willing and ready to do this, and I would feel, and I think most community partners would feel encouraged to hear from them. So thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. Who's next, Pat?
I have Jordan, Jordan Johnson.
Okay.
Hello, everyone.
You have three minutes, please state your name and your address, thank you.
Perfect. My name is Jordan Johnson, I work with Cultivate Charlottesville. As a CCS partner, I wanted to share for a few minutes, I give a couple of updates of our programming. One is the programming that we're pursuing this fall, and two is to talk about a collaboration between the CCS Nutrition Department and Cultivate that's happening next week. So with the schools going virtual this fall, we have scaled back our engagement with students and have decided to focus our engagement efforts with students living in Hearthwood Apartments, taking the nature walk to the Greenbrier Garden twice a week and for a short socially distant gathering, engaging students in Friendship Court and Sixth Street Apartments in the UAC Programming Space on Sixth Street, collaborating with City of Promise to host lunch in the garden with students living in West Haven, and partnering with Abundant Life to spend time in the Beaufort Garden after their tutoring sessions. We're also continuing to work with the eight CCS High School Student Food Justice Interns in our paid internship program, providing two weekly shifts, building job skills and leadership opportunities, including recent virtual meeting with delegate Sally Hudson, challenging her to think of school foods as a place to build equity and to prioritize the voices of students eligible for free and reduced meals. On that note, we are collaborating with CCS Nutrition Team next week in a very different but still exciting Farm to School Week. We are hosting Farm to School programming in person in those small cohorts that I mentioned earlier, but we have challenged ourselves to find ways to transfer these experiences to the home. So next week, we're releasing videos of tours of the garden and where they stand right now. Teachers have asked for some content with guided questions after, so we're happy to share that as well. We've worked to source hundreds of bunches of collards to distribute with Thursday's Lunch for Harvest of the Month program with a backpack flyer recipe and guided, a guide to find videos with step-by-step instructions. We also have a video of Mr. Juan Diego Wade reading the Harvest of the Month book coming out next week, which is exciting as well. The last thing I want to mention is that Carlton Jones, the Nutrition Director, and the Nutrition Team have planned, have worked really hard and planned a from-scratch lunch option on Friday, October 9th, highlighting fresh, fresh baked chicken, potatoes, and local zucchini and summer squash. Hopefully you all will get a chance to see some of the fruits of the fall harvest next week. Thank you again for the insanely difficult decisions that you all are making. I hope you have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, Cultivate Charlottesville. Who's next, Mr. Cuomo?
Nancy D., and she is unmuted.
Hi, thank you. This is Nancy Deutsch. I live on Merryweather Street. I also want to start by echoing the thanks to all of you for your hard work during this time. I know you're making incredibly difficult decisions, particularly with pretty changing information and lack of definitive evidence, so I appreciate that. I also appreciate your decision to walk back the reopening plan as hard as I know that was. But I also have a concern. I am concerned about the MAP testing for elementary students that's planned. So from what I can tell, the MAP tests are not state mandated. So it's our district's choice about whether or not to administer the tests. I do understand that they're meant not as accountability metrics, but as more individualized assessment tools to help teachers gauge students' levels of learning. But I have serious doubts about their utility in this context and concerns about the effects of testing right now on students and teachers. So parents and teachers have been really struggling and, and community partners, as we heard, to keep students engaged in and enjoying school. Taking a 60 to 90-minute online assessment, I suspect will do a lot of damage to that foundation that we've been working so hard to create. That's especially coming on top of the PALS testing that some grades already had due to the state mandate for the, for the PALS testing, I believe. So I'm concerned about creating additional stress for both elementary students and teachers who are already working incredibly hard and feeling very stressed and anxious from what I can tell. Beyond that, I also have some serious doubts about what the tests will actually tell teachers. So I know that many parents are struggling to keep their kids sitting at the screens for classes and independent work, and I know the community partner who spoke earlier noted that as well. I imagine that will be amplified for a 60 to minute, 90-minute test in front of the computer. So what you're likely to be assessing is really how well kids can keep their attention focused online, not the, the content that they have in their kids, I'm sorry, in their heads. For students who already have attentional challenges, this may be made even worse by the fact that for some kids with attentional difficulties, they may miss easy questions because they're not being challenged and are not engaged. It's easier for them to miss those easy questions. And because MAP adjusts questions based on students' answers, if you're disengaged online and missing easy questions, you'll never even get to the more difficult questions. So you, there's more difficult questions might have kept you more engaged, but in the end, the screen time is likely to exacerbate this. So you may not even know what, what kids actually know. Teachers are professionals. They've been working incredibly hard to build connections with students virtually. And I suspect that if we gave the teachers some autonomy to find ways to assess their students' learning base in ways that they felt best mapped onto their students' ways of learning and needs and what they need right now, that they may be able to come up with really creative ways to assess student knowledge while also continuing to build their connections to and relationships with students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nancy. Mr. Cuomo, who's next?
We have Beth Ike, who can unmute herself.
Good evening, folks. My name is Beth Ike, and I live at 802 St. Clair Avenue. I'm just hoping that we can hear some explanations tonight. Specifically, I'd love an explanation for why the COVID Committee was instructed to put forth a premature return-to-school plan that caused great confusion and stress for families and teachers alike. I don't understand why the district would ever consider going against the agreed-upon plan where we were planning to move forward one nine at a time. I'm also hopeful we'll be offered an explanation for why certain LGBTQ-related content has been targeted for removal from our elementary-level programming. As a JMRL librarian said to me, "Read a crayon story is a gem of a book," and it's one of their favorite recommendations. Why would we be pulling this from our kindergarten lessons? What is the thinking behind the censorship? Lastly, I just asked the board to take both of these issues seriously and respectfully demand accountability from our leadership. Doc Grackens, perhaps these two issues did not originate with you, but as our superintendent, the buck stops with you. I'm hoping we can hear from you this evening on these fronts. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Ike. Who's next, Mr. Cuomo?
We have Kate Tilak, who's able to unmute at this time.
Thank you, Kate Tilak, 1526 Oxford Road. "Three minutes is a short amount of time in which to defend one's existence in the world, but I will do my best. I identify as queer. My pronouns are she/her. My child is eight years old at Venable Elementary, and she or they identify as non-binary. My comments are regarding the gender identity lesson that was struck down. I'm asking Dr. Atkins and Dr. Odie to provide a statement that they know and understand the Virginia Values Act and will immediately begin work implementing provisions that protect and support LGBTQ students and staff. The Virginia Values Act is a law. It's not a bill. It's a law that was signed by Governor Northram that protects many different people from discrimination, including women and veterans. It also protects gender identity and sexual orientation, as well as other LGBTQ characteristics. Gender identity and sexual orientation are separate things. I ask that Charlottesville City Schools opt for LGBTQ educator training from side-by-side. Side-by-side is an LGBTQ organization out of Richmond. The trainings are short, possibly two hours long. They provide current information and best practices for schools. What this would do is put everyone on the same page with current information so everyone can have a similar starting point for productive conversation. Let me tell you about my non-binary child and how much I love them and how proud I am of them every day. My child is amazing. She is smart. She is talented. She is funny. She is a good friend. She works hard as a student. She loves her school, and she loves everyone in her school. Please love her back. Please show her that she exists in the world. She gets to have that. She gets to see herself represented as she is in her full, beautiful life. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Tilak. Who's next, Mr. Cuomo?
I have Amy Marshall, who's able to unmute at this time.
Ms. Marshall, you're next, in three minutes.
Hello, my name is Amy Sarah Marshall. I use the pronouns she and hers, and I live at 260 Tussam Street here in the city. I'm the lesbian parent of an LGBTQ child in the Charlottesville system. She's at CHS. And I've also been with Stevie L. Pride for, gosh, nine years or so. And so that's led me to work with the LGBTQ community a lot, including youth in this area. So I'm also responding to the issue of the LGBTQ curriculum. But I'm going to reiterate some things that I brought up to you back in 2014 and just point out that since that year, LGBTQ visibility has increased both nationally in terms of marriage equality and employment protections, also with the Virginia Values Act already mentioned. And here in Charlottesville, we have had alternative proms, youth picnics, youth groups, a pride festival that attracted 10,000 attendees. And the most recent statistics show that 26% of millennials identify as LGBTQ. And for Gen Z, that number is growing, and it's even higher. So even as these numbers have grown, I have not seen the supports for kids in our schools grow at all. As a parent, I have watched my kids hear anti-gay words, jokes, bullying, slurs in the classroom, on the playground, in elementary school and in middle school. And never once have they had a teacher, a bus driver, a staff member step in and provide some kind of guidance or intervention. What I haven't seen is any robust, comprehensive, system-wide plan to address issues and needs. So it's not just the curriculum, but that is my number-one request. Provide an inclusive curriculum at all grade levels. Sexual orientation and gender identity are not controversial anymore, and they're not sexual. Kids in kindergarten can have two dads, two moms, a transgender parent. Children in kindergarten can know that they are trans. We have to validate the lived experiences of children and set the stage for all children to understand and respect the differences of people that they will be encountering as they grow. This is not something to put off. In elementary school, that's where these words and these behaviors are learned. That's where bullies are born. We need to proactively foster student GSA's gender and sexuality alliances. We need to proactively and deliberately encourage these groups and provide leadership around them. We need to put policy into practice. Yes, you have an anti-discrimination policy, fantastic. But a policy that nobody is held accountable to and nobody knows how to implement it into practice is not worth its weight in anything. Be explicit. We can't just say all.
Ms. Marshall, your time is up.
Okay, I am going to be sending a letter to you with all of my proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Appreciate it. Who's next, Mr. Cuomo?
We have Katrina Cooper, and Katrina can unmute herself at this time.
Hello, my name is Katrina Cooper, and I'm a Riverside resident. And I was just coming on here to bring a little attention to you guys because I had an issue with, I guess, my cousin have a child with a IEP. And I just feel when school started back up, that his IEP person was, I mean, not in contact with him like she should have been. He's a special needs child. And all the extra curriculums that the teachers will work with him with, like, nobody was reaching out to her. So that was one of my main concerns, was about, they have to do something better about the kids that has IEPs. And another one of my concerns was that I had called to the school, and as we all know, the kids are virtual, and they have to have the technology and the tools to go with the Chromebook, such as the charger. And they had told me that they had a shortage, a shortage in the chargers, and that they were on backhoe. And that brings a little concern to my attention, too, because the kids need these things, and I don't understand why, like, they don't have them, like, yeah. But that's, they, they're my two main issues, and I thank you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. I appreciate your comments. Who's next?
So there are no other hand raised, but I do see Lisa Green had signed up to provide public comment. And I'm just unmuting Lisa at this time.
Lisa, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your, the time to speak, and I appreciate all you do. I appreciate all the teachers that are working so hard through this time. I come to you to say nothing more than some other speakers have eloquently put, except to say that I support the, the request to put the LGBTQ gender non-binary, gender non-discrimination into the curriculum. And, and I will keep this brief. Charlottesville is in the national spotlight. Unfortunately, we have been since August 12th. It's not just about race. It's antisemitic tone, the LGBTQ. And we're in the national spotlight. And then we were again in the national spotlight with the New York Times. Let's not be in the national spotlight again because we are not following the Virginia Values Act in giving every child the opportunity to be who they are in school and feel supported. You don't know what it's like to have your kid come home and say, hey, we made some at school today for Mother's Day. I could only make one, because they only had enough for everybody to have one. So the child has to then make a choice about what they do for Mother's Day for their two mothers. Don't put the kids in that situation. And also, give them enough support and start teaching the. And also, give them enough support and start teaching the children so that they don't become bullies. I just ask for leadership. The world is watching us, Charlottesville. The world's watching to see what we do and see how we lead. Dr. Atkins, the world's watching you as well. We've got this already in the paper and let's not make this another national headline. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Anyone else?
Yes, we have Julia Feldmeyer, who's unmuted at this time.
Okay, Ms. Feldmeyer, three minutes.
Hey, I just, I want to second the comment that Lisa Green just made, that's a great point. But I joined this call because I wanted to talk a little bit about virtual learning and a hopeful return to in-person learning. Our daughter is in the pre-K4 class and we ended up finding a spot in a private preschool for her, which I'm really grateful for. And it's been terrific to see how well the school has operationalized getting kids in the classroom safely or as safely as can be. You know, the kids are happy running around the playground wearing their masks. And I think there's plenty of proof, proof around Charlottesville that this can be done when we are deliberate and thoughtful about how to do it. And so I, my hope is, there's been a lot of discussion about the hard decisions we make. And I think a lot of talk of doubling down on, well, we've already put effort into building a virtual curriculum, let's stick with it. But if it's not working, I don't know why we're doubling down and putting, continuing to put more effort into that as opposed to saying, hey, how are we really going to operationalize in-person learning to make it happen and make it happen safely? When there's plenty of evidence if we look hard and do our research to see how other places are doing it and doing it well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Feldmeyer. Who's next?
We have DeeDee Smith next, who is unmuted at this time.
Thank you, thank you. I was inspired by the last couple of speakers and just wanted to reiterate something I've spoken about before. Per the Ibram Kendi metric, I think you need to ask yourself, do your decisions create racial inequity or does it alleviate racial inequity? Simply put, are they racist or anti-racist? Everything I've heard tonight increases the gap for educational access and assessment between families of less wealth, mostly minority students, and those with resources, mostly white students. Who are your decisions helping? How are your decisions shaping the imbalance that was recognized in the national media as racist? Are your decisions now racist or anti-racist? Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Who's next, Mr. Cuomo?
Next, we have Finn Green Marshall, who is unmuted at this time.
Hi.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm a student at CHS and I myself identify as non-binary. And I, I think that elementary students should be able to learn about all sorts of gender identities because they need to have, because some kids, it's just like, they know that something is different about them, but they don't know what it is. And sometimes they just need the words to know what it is and they can't always access those words if they don't have the correct access. So you need to give them the access to know who they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next, Mr. Cuomo?
So there are no other hands raised. I do have about six people who are on the public comment list. And I don't know if I should read those names out loud or just have them try to raise their hand in the Zoom participant attendees list, so I can call on them from the gallery.
I think that's probably preferable. So if you want to have a, if you want to comment at this time, please raise your hand and Mr. Cuomo will unmute you and you'll have three minutes to tell us your comments. Okay. We have another opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. So if you want to make a comment at that time, that's appropriate as well. Tell them to click a button.
So at the bottom of the panelist list, there should be a series of buttons and one of them is raise your hand button.
Thank you, Mr. Cuomo. Anybody raise their hand?
At this time, I do not see anybody else who has raised their hand in the, in the gallery.
Okay, thank you. You will have an opportunity at the end of the meeting to comment as well. At this time, I'm going to close public comment so that we can move on to the rest of the items on the agenda. As always, Charlottesville City School Board appreciates all the public comment and we would encourage everybody who wants to speak to continue to listen to the meeting and participate at the end. So with that, we have, we're going to move on to the special recognition. Dr. Atkins or Ms. Powell, who's, Ms. Powell says on-
I'm going to have that item.
Hi, welcome.
So very briefly, just want to draw attention to the hard work that Renee Hoover, who leads our finance department, and Chrissy Vick in our communications team, they've been working very hard. You may have noticed that the last two budget books that you were issued looked very different than the ones you had received in the past. And what we are doing under Renee's leadership is working towards becoming a merit, having a meritorious budget and receiving that national award. This year was the, our second time with the new format, our second time out of the gate. We submitted for what's called the pathway, which is, it's an accomplishment. But with that, we get feedback and we expected some feedback our first time out of the gate. So we know what areas we want to work on next, so we can continue our efforts to receive the meritorious budget award. And under Renee's leadership, I'm sure we will get there. And again, I would like to thank Chrissy Vick. And Beth Chuck also helped us, but Chrissy really had the lead in putting together that look of the new budget book with all the graphic supports that you see there. So thank you to the team and thanks for taking a moment to recognize the, the hard work of our finance team.
Well, let me just, at this time, recognize our finance team and Chrissy Vick for their accomplishment and pathway to the meritorious budget award, which is conveniently called MBA. Renee, thank you, I just, your leadership is quiet but mighty and we really appreciate your professionalism and expertise in, because it's critical work and we just couldn't do without you and yet so under the radar. So thank you and I'm happy to have the opportunity to recognize you. So congratulations. And Chrissy and Beth too, thank you. Thanks, Kim. Next, we're going to go to the consent agenda. Were there any questions or comments about the consent agenda? Excellent. Any motions of any sort?
Madam Chair, I move the acceptance of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, great. Any conversation or discussion on the items on the consent agenda? Okay, and with that, we're going to go ahead and call the vote. Ms. Green.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsburger?
Yes.
Dr. Craft?
Yeah.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Purrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. The next item on our agenda is the naming of facilities and grounds policy that Dr. Baptist is going to bring up as, I think this is a change that, well, Dr. Baptist can explain it. And thank you very much for joining us, Dr. Baptist.
Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Atkins, thank you for having me. And I did bring the naming of facilities and grounds policy to the board last month and was asked to go back and look at some of the policies and resolutions that we have regarding equity. So I have added language in there from those places. And the language that's added is in bold. And there was one bold statement in there last time, which is still there. But I would ask if there are any questions about the changes that have been added and would ask for the approval of the policy. And once we have the policy approved, we will start getting ready to have our first meeting. I know we have two board members who will be working with us, Mr. Bryant and Dr. Craft. And we have had several members of the community and school division who have volunteered for this committee, but I didn't want to really organize the committee until we had this policy approved.
Great, thank you, Dr. Baptist. Were there any questions on the changes Dr. Baptist made? Or I'm going to try to say her name as much as I can during this.
Yeah, Ms. McKeever, please let me know if you want me to project the screen, I can do that as well, just take my cue from you, okay?
Oh, okay, thank you.
You want me to project?
I guess though, just for the moment, were there any questions or comments? So the bold items were the part that Dr. Baptist changed, made changes.
The fourth paragraph that is also bolded was in what I brought to you last time. The first two paragraphs that are bolded are what I took language from the equity information that you asked me to do.
Okay, any comments? Okay, hearing none, we can- Doctor, I mean, Mr. Wade, it's hard to hear, like, you're, it's hard to hear.
I'm good.
Okay.
We knew he was good, but we're glad to hear it.
We're going to vote on that one, we agree.
I would just like to say that I really appreciate the changes. I think I really like the language that you put in and I think it really clarifies the work that we need to do and the reasons why we do it. So I appreciate the work that you've done on this.
Glad to do it, thank you.
And I would just like to echo that same sentiment. I appreciate the language being specific toward our goals. So I think it's, it's a good update and a great starting document.
Thank you.
And I would like to thank you, Lashandra, for bringing that up and prompting this, these additions. So thank you for that.
And I'm super excited about what the future holds in terms of our facilities and naming. So I think this is a great step forward and I look forward to hearing what the committee says in the coming months. So I'm certainly happy to entertain any motions at this time.
Madam Chair, I move the adoption of the naming of the facilities and grounds policy as presented by Dr. Baptist.
I second it.
Okay, and I will, any questions or comments after, now that it's been, okay? And I'll ask Ms. Green to call the roll for the vote.
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Ms. Bryson Morsburger?
Yes.
Dr. Craft?
Yeah.
Ms. McKeever?
Yes.
Ms. Purrier?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Thank you, Dr. Baptist.
Thank you.
I feel like I'll be able to say your name again later, so. I'm going to get my numbers up. Okay, now, the next item are the items for discussion. And the first one is exciting private foundation donation for licensed social workers, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To the school board members, this is an exciting presentation that we have tonight. Back in early June, Ms. Lisa Torres made us aware that there was a philanthropic group in the community who was interested in talking to us about how they might support our students and especially in light of COVID-19 and some of the concerns that our students might have or families might have around the area of trauma during COVID and what they were experiencing. So Ms. Stephanie Randolph was the representative for the group and we had the distinct pleasure of meeting with her several times to talk to her about what our needs are or we anticipated would be in our school division. And so tonight, what we bring to you is not only the incredibly generous donation, a donation of $500,000, a half million dollars from the philanthropic group through Stephanie's work and her coordination and collaboration with us to actually put clinical social workers or social workers in our schools, Walker, Buford and the high school in order to be able to create a comprehensive program that threads through all three of those schools to respond to the needs of our students, whatever they may be, as they either engage with learning online or in our building. Now, we recognize that it's a tremendous lift to provide all the supports that our students need. And through this gift, we're going to be able to provide some of those very important aspects of social emotional development. So we have with you us tonight, all three of the principals, Dr. Hastings from Walker. We also have Dr. Turner and Dr. Iris Ari, who will talk to you about the program that will be in place. I'm not sure which one will start.
Good evening, Dr. Atkins, thank you, school board, school board chair. We are, and I think Dr. Hastings is here as well.
Yep.
We just want to say thank you, we are excited about this program as well. And I think to touch on what Dr. Atkins just said, it's, that vertical piece between Walker all the way up to the high school is going to be an incredible valuable, incredibly valuable addition to our, to all of our teams. So if we can go to the first, we definitely want to say thank you. As Dr. Atkins said, this opportunity has given us five additional clinical social workers in our schools. So those will be two positions at Charlottesville High School, two at Buford, and then one position at Walker Elementary School. So the continuum of roles between Walker and the high school, we wanted to make sure that these roles were consistent from Walker up to Buford to the high school. So these positions would do a few things. First, they'll provide school-based clinical mental health intervention and trauma-informed care, which will lead to the stabilization and educational outcome growth for our students. These positions will be integrated fully into the school's daily life to build relationships with our students, families and our staff. They'll participate in, participate in or complete threat assessments, that's threat to self, threat to others. They'll support our staff with professional learning for mental health initiatives, processes and interventions. And what's really important is the staffing will be year-round as well, with staggered summer dates, which will ensure that we have support for our families, our students and our staff, even through the summers as well. They'll engage in 512 alignment and they'll coordinate to ensure a continuum of services between the three schools. And also, I'm sorry, I was like, thank you. They'll also be critical to our CTSS process as well. And they'll help to identify students with acute or emergent clinical care and they'll help with assessment and related ongoing interventions as needed for our students as well. So this will, this is, will provide all three schools with vital clinical support for our students, staff and our families as well as we head into the school year.
And Dr. I, and Dr. Hastings, if I could just add, we, the three of us have worked and continue to work very hard and I'd like the public to know this. We are really engaged in having a strong vertical alignment. And because we are trying to, we are trying to pour into our children, we are incredibly engaged in addressing the issues of the whole child. And, and these, these positions will allow us to address some of the concerns and trauma that many of our young people experience that our school counselors just cannot get to. As wonderful as our school councils are, we, we need more help. As wonderful as our school councils are, we need more help. So, and we also know that our children take some of their issues, and they're still dealing with some of the issues after they leave Walker, after they leave Beaufort, and go to the high school. So if we can continue to work on this strong vertical alignment and link, then we're hoping to wrap services around these children, definitely from the time they start at Walker until they walk across the stage with Dr. I.
And we are currently in the interview process. So hopefully, very soon, we will be able to get these folks into the schools and get going with this initiative. So again, I want to say thank you to everyone that made this possible.
So I have a question, because that's what I do. I, what, tell me more about, first of all, I appreciate that this is, these are very distinct. The school council is very distinct from like a social worker. And will our social workers follow our students up vertically? Like, that would be, you know, a possibility, or, yeah. So that's my first question.
My, my, my goal would be that there, the social workers would basically be a PLC, and they would know the children, the, as they leave the different schools. So when they get to the next school, the social workers are not starting over with the relationship piece or working with families, because they've been working with the social workers at the other schools for the entire year.
I definitely think that's one of the advantages of many of our programs, is following kids up the, you know, especially in elementary school. Like, you have the specialists who work with the students for like all four years that they're in the elementary school. And I think that really, that knowing those kids helps and gives them the additional support that they need. So it's, so I guess they'll just, if, will they have like a docket? Like, I want to call docket, but I can't remember, like.
A caseload? A caseload?
Yes. Similar to a docket. But not, not at all. Yeah, so anyway, so they'll have a caseload that they just kind of have for the whole year. Do they then, like, do the, have people come on? So it's kind of more long-term?
That would be our hope. And with the social workers being a, being a PLC, being a group, problem-solving together, we're hoping that the model is very consistent from Walker up to the high school as well. So they're using the same strategies, they're problem-solving together. And, you know, they're, even though they're individual at different schools, they're one unit that can flex back and forth and support each other.
Okay, thank you, guys. I would like to let the board have an opportunity. I'm sorry to hijack that, sorry. Mr. Wade? Do you have any comments?
No.
Dr. Kraft?
There. Yeah, well, I'm, of course, very excited about this as a mental health person myself. I think it fills a huge need that we have. And one question, will these, the social workers have the flexibility to intervene with students' families if that is deemed appropriate?
Yes, we would like for the social workers to build strong relationships with the students and the families. And we do not want to limit their ability to be able to make those connections. Because again, it all spirals back to learning. So if we could address some of the social issues that our students have, then our hope is that we will either increase their achievement or at least keep children at a level where they are achieving. And school is the place where they can grow and learn.
Thank you.
You guys are talking, but I wonder if, like, structurally, is this under, like, some special services? Or where is this going to be located in terms of our organization chart?
It will be in the same place as our social workers are currently. So it will come under the Student Services Department.
Okay. I'm sorry, again, hijacked. So anybody else have any questions?
So this is great news. Being a former counselor, this will really add additional support to our students. So I'm really happy about, about the social workers being added in the schools. So are they in the buildings?
Yes, they will be in the buildings.
Okay. And working in sync with the school counselors?
Yes, they'll be working tightly with our student support team that's already in place.
Okay, that's great news.
And Mr. B, one of the things that we have talked about, it was sort of our first blink, but I think we're going to try to birth this out, is that we want to try to create a very strong mental health core in our buildings. So we want to be able to add them to our region 10 workers, our school counselors. If we're able to have some TDT workers, we want to make a core.
Okay.
And have them be a part of the everyday life in our schools, to be, to become a part of the culture, the ethos of our building. So that's what we're excited about them being with us. They're not going to be coming in from across town and all that. They're going to be with us every day.
So is this going to be just for one year? Or are we looking at this on a continuous basis?
The funding that we've received right now is for one year. And we could go back and talk with the donors as we learn more about the success and we have more evidence of the success. We're hoping that the donor may be amenable to continued conversation, that we can continue to expand the program. And of course, we will have an opportunity during our budget development process to talk about how do we continue this program? How do we continue the services of the program?
Okay, thank you.
Other board members like to speak? Ms. Torres?
Yeah, thank you. Very excited about all of this. So thank you, everybody who's, who's working hard to implement this. I had just a couple of quick questions. I know that supporting our students is so critical and so crucial. And as, you know, stated, there's so many, so much going on in the environment right now, and so many different levels of types of trauma to not just the students, but for all of us in this current COVID atmosphere. So supporting kids and students is great, and that rolls out, and that supports the rest of the team. And I know at one point, we had talked a little bit about, and I'm seeing, looking at the presentation as far as building relationships with families and staff. And Dr. Kraft asked a little bit about families. But will these social workers be available? I don't know if you've looked at the model yet as far as walk-in support to staff or teachers as well. Has anybody looked at that? And then maybe on top of that, I think Dr. Hastings had used a type of model last year. And whether or not, I don't know the specifics of that, but if he could speak to that as well.
So we're actually finding, as we speak with our school counselors now, that with students not in the building, although they're having a lot of interaction with students, they're finding that they're having more interaction with adults. And we're finding that our counseling services are being utilized, not just by our students, but by our entire school community. And that has been an interesting change, and one that we think has been, has proven pretty fruitful. For these positions, as we've discussed, the job description and the primary roles of these positions, we really are focused on students. That said, all of our student services teams, all of our mental health professionals in the building, support the community. I think as we think about the students that are going to be served by this program, and we think about equity, these are students with critical needs. These are students with massive, deep needs that need to be served. And so we are looking, we're not actually going to be serving a very large number of children, whereas you might think a school counselor has a caseload of half of a school at Walker. These are going to be folks who are working in a social working capacity with our neediest population of students. And so if there's, if there's time and there's ability in the day to work with adults, that would be terrific. But the reality is, the need in our community for social work services is profound. And I think they're going to have plenty of work with our children before they get to the adults.
Ms. Torres, and if we know anything about social workers and counselors, each time they encounter one of our staff members who need support, they carve out that time in their calendar, be it during the school day, after hours, before hours. They're always there to carve out that time. So although their attention is to the student, they know in order for the student to be healthy, the family has to be healthy, but also our staff, they have to be healthy also, and feel like they are part of the entire process and the process of healthy social, emotional learning.
Absolutely. Well, thank you for this. I'm excited, and I'm excited to hear. I mean, I don't know at what point we can get a follow-up report, just to hear how well this is going. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, wonderful principals.
Any, any, any other board members have any comments? Honestly, Mr. Dr. Turner, that was really persuasive on your part. Your passion for it is clear. And not that I, I definitely heard passion, Dr. Hastings and Dr. Iris Ari, but I've heard passion from them before. So it was lovely to, you know, hear how supportive the three of you have been. And I'm really looking forward to what happens from here and how we can serve our children best. So thank you all for that. I also want to say thank you to said philanthropic organization. I'm really looking forward to seeing what we can do, especially it seems like what Dr. Hastings said about this as being a profound time for the needs of our community. We, this will just continue to kind of grow. And so it just seems like a really good opportunity and good timing. So thank you to them for their support of our division. I'm going to move on to the next item. So thank you to the principals for coming. And Dr. King, I think you're up with the special education update.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Atkins. I would like to introduce Katrina Lee, Supervisor of Special Education, and Rachel Raznick, Special Education Coordinator, as the presenters of the update on face-to-face instruction for special education.
Thank you all for coming. Look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Atkins. We appreciate the opportunity to share this afternoon with you all some of the things and opportunities that we are taking with our students and families to provide some face-to-face instruction and services to some of our students. So I appreciate that. So if we can go to our first slide. We know that families, educators, and so many would love for COVID to be gone or not even be here. But I will say that our school, our teams, our teachers, our administrators, our principals, our families, even our community have had great discussions with, and with us to collaborate on how we can just serve our students best. We have since March and continue to have discussions on how we can respond to and meet the needs of our learners with the most significant challenges and needs for whom we knew that virtual learning would present significantly disproportionate impact for some of our students due to the nature and intensity of their disabilities. And so if we could go to slide two, our decision-making process. And this is part of our decision-making process, and it's not exhausted. But we certainly knew that we needed a place to start, to start to work with some of our learners. So working with many stakeholders, Charlottesville City Schools developed some specific eligibility. Not eligibility in terms of what you think of special education eligibility, but just some criteria for face-to-face services and learning with IEP teams on individual-based, on individualized basis for some of our students. We began to collect data that suggested to us that virtual learning is disproportionately impacting the progress of some of our students and our programs, specifically Early Childhood Special Education Program, our LEAP program, our STAR program, and our BEST program. So, and so, and also for our programs for students who require one-to-one services and assistance or daily intervention, one-to-one, in-person setting. So looking at that, we started to then look at, does a student, you know, meet the criteria for those, in those areas? And how could we together look at the IEP and determine what areas were having the most difficulty for the students to access in the virtual setting? We also looked at access with, looking at strategies and accommodations, and still looking at students who weren't able to access, even with adding those additional supports. And we knew we would have to add in the virtual learning. And so the IEP teams then looked at what adjustments, excuse me, we could start to make to facilitate the learning for some of our students. I've been looking at that next. We started to look at safety measures. Of course, the health and safety will be in our students, and our staff, and our families remain important to us as we go through this time together. So we worked with many stakeholders, again, with our schools, local health departments, looking at CDC guidelines, our local trends, not only our local trends, but the surrounding locality trends, to determine how we could provide educational and service opportunities for students with disabilities within our schools. So we looked at all of those measures and individual student needs, and developed some specific guidelines for COVID with input, again, from all those stakeholders and healthcare professionals as well. And we developed written plans for each student, specifically taking all factors into consideration, including, but not limited to, building access, individual people access to the building, all PPE equipment that will be needed prior to any student or family coming into the school. We looked at the exit, the entries, if students needed to access the elevators at any other parts of the school. We looked at signage, we worked with Kim Powell to work on signage, and what that will look like. Temperature scans, all of the safety measures that we have information and data on to date. We tried to make sure that we implemented those things. Then, after those safety measures were in place, we looked at how we can best, in the most safe way, have students come in for orientation, and what that will look like before we tried to provide any services to any students to have a true orientation. Our friends have been at home since March, and it's a total different setting for them. So we wanted to make sure that there was orientation, even though it may be their homeschool. We wanted to make sure that when they came in, the routines that they were used to weren't going to be in place. There were so many other mitigating factors. We wanted to make sure that our students had an opportunity to have an orientation back into their school with the current normal of what they would need to do to be safe. And so right now, we are in the second week of just starting services for some of our learners. And I am very pleased to say that it is going well. We will continue to make those individualized, very careful decisions with our teams, with our families, for students as we continue in this virtual, virtual learning. Rachel is going, Rachel Raznick, one of our special education coordinators, is going to share more specifically about the students and the data and the logistics of the day-to-day for some of our students.
So I think we need to acknowledge the staff who has had a willingness to embrace these ideas of coming into the building and have collaborated with us to help us know what will help them to feel safe while we're working on the pieces that will keep them safe. Logistically, what happens when an IEP team makes this decision is that staff are notified, and they are provided the PPE that they require. For some students, that's your basic gloves, masks, hand sanitizer. For other students, we're also looking at items like gowns to protect us in the event of bodily fluids. We work closely with our school principals. All of them have been very eager and open to the idea and discussed what it means in each of their individual buildings. Our school nurses are notified, and they've all provided support with healthcare plans and making sure our school staff is prepared. And our transportation department has been securing the routes. And for some of our students, we're looking at, you know, two 30-minute sessions a week. And so transportation has been able to facilitate that, and we appreciate that. For the specific students, I do want to say our chart is stale. For the specific students, I, I do want to say our chart is stale already and we made it this morning. We are having our teachers reach out. So, there are three special education coordinators and we are all working closely with our teachers in this process. And I know multiple kids have been moved into the planning stage today. So, right now, so effective Monday, we will have 11 students coming into our buildings. We will have two students in that orientation phase where they are learning the new procedures of school, practicing wearing their face covering. And then we have 13 this morning, students who are planning for. So, our teachers are reaching out to us to help them make these decisions. But these are IEP team decisions based on our criteria and, you know, we're, we're eager to serve our students in the most appropriate way.
Is that the end of your presentation?
It's the end of our presentation.
Okay, great.
Any questions?
Who has a question? Dr. Kraft.
Just a couple of things. I'm wondering, you know, with these numbers, what, what percentage is this of the total population that you would like to be serving in, in the schools or who need to be face-to-face as opposed to virtual?
I think what we've realized is that a number of families who we would like to serve in person are not necessarily going to take advantage of that opportunity due to the health risks for their children. And so, we didn't set a goal percent of students. We've really left it up to the IEP teams.
Okay, um, and, and how is this like, how is this working in terms of how many school buildings are involved? That kind of thing?
Yep. So, currently it is a few of our school buildings. But the option is available as IEP teams decide. We will consider the students' homeschool, but also centralized locations if that makes the most sense.
And so, is this like, like one student at a time? Is it basically individual in-person instruction in the school building? So, they're not like a small group of students there together?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I think those are my questions. Thank you.
Any other board members have questions?
I have a question.
Right, you can go ahead.
My question is, how are the students identified? Does the IEP team call the parents of those students who needed additional service? Or do you all get calls from parents and then the team comes together? How, how does that work?
I would say both.
Another both?
Yes, sir. So, we're definitely listening to all parent input because parents are at home with their students right behind them. They're seeing the difficulties and the successes of their students. But our case managers and our teachers are also in the virtual spaces with our students. And so, many of our teachers are coming to us and coming to the table and saying that we need to schedule a meeting because we're observing that our students or our caseloads are not accessing and not making progress with even the strategies that are in place. And I just want to share also that that's not always the first go-to. We're looking at coming to the team to say, hey, what are strategies that we can look at? But certainly if teams, IEP teams are making decisions and discussions, we have everyone at the table. So, that's either, I guess to answer the question, it's both the parent or our teachers.
So, if you're out and about in the community and you run into a parent who comes up to you and say, you know, my kid is struggling and what do I do? What should our response be, especially that, you know, they have an IEP?
And I'm sure that, you know, as educators, if a parent sees us, they're going to grab us. I would if I were a parent. I would say to let the parent know, thank you for reaching out to you or reaching out to us, whoever it may be. And just to please contact their, their student, school, special education case manager and work with the school and they're happy to set up a meeting with them and discuss their concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
To the extent that anybody could help Ms. Cooper and her family with the IEP. I don't know anything about that, but I direct that. Ms. Bryson Morseburger?
Uh, yeah, just to follow up, um, their two 30-minute sessions per student per week. Have families indicated that they would like to increase that amount of time or they need additional days of face-to-face learning, the feedback you're getting?
Good question, Ms. Bryson Morseburger. So, that, that I think that was an example that Ms. Raznick shared that we have students who are coming in for, for 19 minutes, if that's a tolerance to get orientation. So, that was just an example. It's totally individualized. So, we don't have, it's not like a set criteria. For example, if you're in one of the programs, you're coming in for two 30-minute face-to-face. It is totally individualized per student and I don't think any of our students have the same amount of time per minute. So, it's totally individualized.
So, if you need more time, you can, you can request it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the board? I think I had a comment. What about PTOT speech services? Can you tell us a little bit more about how those services are being delivered?
So, we have, for students who are staying virtual, they're able to access all those services virtually through the same methods that they would access their class. We're also using a lot of coach, coach reading. And then students are coming in in person. It is a blend of in-person PTOT and speech or hybrid on, for some students, the OT is on the computer and the teacher is in person. And we're making it work that way. So, we don't have too many people and we, you know, respect everyone's need to tell the work or not.
Obviously, I just want to, well, thank you. I feel like I have a couple of things to say. One is this is a critical need. It's, you know, evident in every single COVID transition committee meeting and every parent and teacher I speak to about children with IEPs and special needs. So, I'm very grateful for the flexibility that our special education department has shown. And of course, like, everybody, I think, wants to meet, meet the needs of their students as safely as possible. So, it's obvious that that's what your team is doing and I appreciate that so much. I feel like, I know that's not, I know there's more than y'all doing this. It's a dramatic amount of work. I can't imagine the logistics and organization involved, especially if you're also working with transportation. So, to that extent that we are, we can recreate that in, in additional environments. I just, I don't want everybody to, who follows this, I'm sorry, you know, this particular cohort clearly needs these services right now, but there are other students who are coming probably back sooner rather than later. And I don't want to have to recreate the wheel every time. So, I really hope that maybe we could have somebody from the special education department come and work with our, I don't know, mitigation or facilities team or the primary, you know, elementary school in the, in the COVID committee. I, I just, like, if you guys are actually doing this work, then we, then I don't want any, everybody recreating the wheel and it really sounds like you guys have, are able to connect students with the, with, with their needs. So, I appreciate that and I'm hopeful that even if it's not like the larger, you know, I don't want you to have to go to more meetings than you already do. But I definitely think your expertise is significant and something that we could really use on, at least from my perspective humbly. So, thank you so much and keep up the good work and thank you for all that you do for our families.
Thank you all for that opportunity to share.
Okay, so that is a lot right there. So, next is our equity update with Beth Chuck and Denise Johnson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board and Dr. Atkins. I'm having some video/audio issues, so hopefully you can hear me and we, and I can make it through it. Just let me know if we have difficulties.
We can hear you. Okay, thank you.
Great. First, I want to take a moment to thank you for your ongoing support and affirmation of our anti-racist and anti-bias work. Also want to thank the staff and community for the feedback that we've received while doing this work. We know what we're doing is important and critical and as a community, we're going to work to get it right. Through it all, your commitment really means so much. We're here to give you a few updates on the current work that's happening. Even in the pandemic, we're trying to maintain an equity lens. During virtual learning, this includes support such as meals, food, communication and our new Remind app, Chromebooks, devices, internet access and regular connections with our students and families. We want to acknowledge Dr. Atkins as she co-chaired the Governor's Commission on African-American History Education. These recommendations have the potential to make real change throughout Virginia, including some of the ideas and practices that began here, such as teaching African-American history as a standalone subject. However, there's still more work to be done.
One area of this commission's recommendations aligns with our own efforts to teach a more honest and inclusive history. We want to commend our social science teachers and coordinator for their ongoing partnership with various school divisions, historic sites and other educational organizations. Their work is centered around our equity goal of having diverse, inclusive and rigorous learning experiences. You've previously heard about this changing the narrative work and I believe that you'll hear more later this fall or winter. We know these changes are important and that change can be hard. As a division, we may stumble in this new work. As we move forward, having better processes, support and communication will be important and helpful. And we are working on those areas. We know social science is one small part of our larger anti-racism and anti-bias work. And in our previous presentations, Denise and I have mostly come before you at these meetings to talk about racial equity. That equity touches on many types of difference. Earlier this year, Virginia's House Bill and 145, 145 and Senate Bill 161 were passed requiring the state to give school divisions guidance about how to support transgender and non-binary students. This guidance will come from the VDOE by the end of the year and it may impact areas from policy to pronouns to curriculum. While we have previously found isolated ways to support our gender non-conforming students, we see this legislation as an opportunity to revisit our schools and our processes more broadly and systematically to better include and see and love and support our students and families. We know that part of this work will be helping our staff grow and understand our own commitments. This area is new for some people and together we will learn what it means to practice equity.
One concrete action we're taking to, to support our staff and encourage growth is hosting a series of lunch and learns with a division that centers around equity, inclusion and anti-bias topics such as appreciating cultural differences, foundational conversations about sexual orientation and gender identity, family engagement and asset-based thinking. These sessions will begin next Friday. Our equity councils will also be working to continue conversations and trainings on a school-based level. As Beth mentioned, having processes, supports and effective communication in place will be important and helpful in keeping us all working towards the same goal. This year, we will be formalizing those methods, including utilizing our equity committee to build out our division-wide equity framework and data dashboard. One thing that remains clear is that we want a community that is welcoming, accepting, supporting, loving and affirming. And we are all willing to do whatever it takes to achieve that goal. Thank you again for your time this evening.
And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you so much, Ms. Chuck and Ms. Johnson for your, for your presentation. Is there, I'd like to go to the board. What questions do you have?
This is Juan Wade. I don't really have a question. I have a, just some, some comments to make. You know, the, the last several months, I've been asked to speak several times on equity and schools and community. And I've called on Beth and Denise to provide information on what the schools have been doing. And, and, you know, I thought I had a good idea of what we've been doing, but once it's compiled together and we're sharing it with various parts of the community, it's really amazing. And, and Denise may not remember this, but when she was hired, one of the things that she said that really stuck with me is she said that, that trust is built in action. And, and, you know, and I think that that's so profound because we can say all of these wonderful things, but if we're not doing anything, it really doesn't mean anything. And I think that we have been, been doing, we can and we are doing, can do more. And these information sessions and getting input from the public is vital to doing that because sometimes we don't get it right and we, that this input from the public, you know, helps guide us into what we're doing because we are the community. So, I'm just, I appreciate the work that's being done and on our efforts on, on equity.
Thank you, Juan.
Dr. Kraft, did you have something to say?
Um, yeah. I also want to express my appreciation for all the work that you guys are doing on this. It seems like you've alluded to this, that maybe some additional work needs to be done specifically around the areas of gender, gender identification. And I know some of the speakers and some of the people who have written to us have mentioned training by the organization side-by-side. It seems like, you know, I, I'm wondering if that's being looked at. It seems like there's, you know, maybe both for all of our staff and also for some of the families that, you know, we, you know, I'm, I'm sure there's discomforts, various discomforts that people have, you know. And I think it's part of our job to, to help with that and to make sure that that doesn't get in the way of the experience of all of our students in the system. So, as, as we've heard from some of the speakers, so I'm wondering, what are, what are your thoughts around that kind of training?
Sorry, go ahead, Beth.
I, I would just say simply that side-by-side came up several times as we've been discussing. Denise and I have been talking a lot about these issues in the last couple of weeks and side-by-side has emerged a couple of times. And also just the model of PTOs in the course of our racial equity work have hosted several nights to help families come alongside in this work. And I suspect that our PTOs would also like to continue to help families come alongside in, in this work too.
We've already, oh, that's okay. We've already locked in our speaker for our staff series and that'll be Siri Russell and she's the Equity Director for Album Mall. And also I reached out to side-by-side to learn more about their training. So, I'll be meeting with Helen from side-by-side really soon to discuss what that looks like for us.
Great. Ms. Bryson Morseburger?
Uh, yeah, a few questions about the, I don't know if it's, this is the time to ask it. But when we're talking about equity, how are we monitoring our students' progress? Because I know a lot of speakers have indicated that they see students who are, you know, most at risk of falling behind, falling behind more. There was a speaker that indicated that, you know, I know we haven't done map testing and it might not be the appropriate time to do it during, you know, virtual learning. But what do we have in place? What metrics can we look at? Like, how are we keeping track of our most vulnerable students and helping them and supporting them?
I think that's, I mean, maybe. I think that's, I mean, maybe we can talk about that under the Advisory Committee update, unless, you know, Dr.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if this was when.
Totally understand, but.
That's a great question.
Johnson and Ms. Chuck are the ones to answer that, but I'm happy for, if anybody else wants.
Ms. Morrisburger, I think we, we can look at, right now, we have the Charlottesville tiered systems of support that are in place along with all of our efforts around equity that allows our students to access a multitude of supports. Our teachers access those supports. If you've noticed on your personnel agenda, you've been getting a number of personnel recommendations to hire tutors that are working with our students before school, after school, and even during the Zoom time, they're engaging with our students. So, this, many of the supports that were in place prior to COVID continue to be in place now. There are also a number of home visits that are being made to make sure that we're staying in close contact with our students and recognizing when they have needs. Our counselors are there, our teachers are there, listening and responding to the voices of our students and our staff.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins.
And you said, Jennifer, that it'll, we'll still be talking about it in the committee update as well?
I mean, with respect, I, I don't know that we'll, I think that's a good time to ask about how virtual learning is going, but, and what, how our students are meeting, getting their needs met. But I'm, you know, I, I also defer to you as, everybody, I mean, I don't think Ms. Chuck and Ms. Johnson are the ones who have that information, is what I'm saying.
Okay, okay. And then, the other question, and maybe this is for Dr. Atkins and not for Beth or Denise, but where the equity work, you know, a lot of callers have talked about the LGBTQ curriculum, so I appreciate, I appreciate you reaching out for the training, and it would be nice to hear an update about that at the next meeting. And then, is there any other, like, outreach planned to kind of let, like, just discussing where we are as a community with equity and that equity looks like what equity looks like for everyone and all groups and making sure that we're being inclusive and adhering to our own standards and not, you know, pulling curriculum prematurely?
I'll be glad to respond to that with reference to pulling curriculum and pulling lessons. You have a policy that says that when we introduce new curriculum and our changing the narrative is a new curriculum, and there's a lot of work that has been done around that area. Teachers have worked really hard this summer on developing lessons, developing plans. They started the work long before the summer and done a really nice job in developing that. But one of your policies asks us to bring that forward so that our community will have an opportunity to review that curriculum and that the board will have an opportunity to look at that curriculum. COVID came in and interrupted a process that has worked incredibly well previously. And so, when we started teaching, our teachers pulled some lessons and started teaching. We got questions from our community, from members of our community to members of our community to ask about those lessons. It wasn't the topic of the lesson that caused us to pull it, it was your process. It was the school board policy that says we would review those lessons and then take them through a process that would allow the board and the community to review those lessons. So, it's less about the topic and more about the process. I think we're headed in a direction now that we will bring all of those lessons and that curriculum before the board. The State Department is currently working on that. They will be presenting that, the guidelines and policies and curricula to all school divisions in the Commonwealth by December 31st. We're one of those school divisions. We happen to be ahead of other school divisions in that area, so we're following those processes. Pulling those lessons or examining those lessons was not because of anything other than your policy says that we do that.
Dr. Atkins, real quickly, so, I mean, I'm just finishing my third year or starting, I don't know where I'm in my term here as school board member, but I'm trying to recall, I mean, is this typical? I don't remember ever being asked to review new curriculum.
You have. When we bring before you textbooks, when we bring before you social studies, science, any of our textbooks, the curriculum itself is not new at that point, or if there are new standards, it's incorporated in those resource materials that we're using. And that comes before not only the board, but it comes before the community also. And the board asked us pretty direct questions about how long has it been before the community? How long has the community had to review those textbooks? Those materials? Have our teachers looked at them? What's the input from our teachers? I'll bring to the board's attention that we delayed the adoption of a reading series in recent years because the board wanted us to give more time to review of those materials. So, bringing that forth and before the board is a process that we have used in the past. It's not a new process for us.
I do recall, you know, that specifically, of course I do, and looking at, at books and reviewing textbooks as they come in. I do not recall being asked to review, you know, curriculum and lesson planning that teachers have worked on.
And that comes from the state. Our lessons and our curriculum comes from the state. The standards come from the state. When we expand on those standards, you review the process by which we're going to go about gifted education. That comes before the school board, and we submit a plan each year to the state on how we're going to do that. And sometimes, very recently, we made sweeping changes to that entire curriculum, how we deliver those lessons and what those lessons look like. And we brought that before the board, the plan to do that. So, changing the narrative is one of those processes. It's one of the changes that we're making in our school division, and that's a process that we go through. It's a very transparent process. It's an open process. It's a process in which we all engage in. I, I looked at the policies. I looked at three different policies that you have and, and looking at how do we approach a process to recommend to the board? And it's the same process that we would have recommended for anything else, any of those other areas of study.
Well, I look forward to having a more robust discussion and maybe looking at all of those policies together. I guess it concerns me, with all due respect, that a couple of people questioning some, some lesson plans can trigger those lessons plans being pulled before it is brought to us for discussion, so that, I just needed to say that. So, thank you.
Now, I'll say also that one of the things that we have done in our school division is that we want to communicate to everyone, every student in our community, every student in our school division, every family, that they are welcomed. We want to value them. We want the words that we say and the actions that we have to say unequivocally that you are accepted, that you are loved, that you are an important part of our school division. And that is whether a student is, is binary, transgender, LGBT, whatever their religion is, whatever their orientation is, heterosexual, homosexual, whatever, one of those checkboxes, whether they're black, they're white, they're Indian, any of those categories. At our school division, there's a school division in which students are accepted, they are valued, our teachers and our staff are accepted and they're valued. I'll be the person to say, these are difficult conversations. They're very difficult conversations. And maybe, maybe to some, they're difficult, maybe to some, they're very easy, but they are difficult. And unfortunately, when we're going about changing, and I can tell you, Charlottesville is probably on the cutting edge of this work. The Department of Education has not completed the work. They're not scheduled to complete it until December 31st. So, Charlottesville is on the cutting edge, and anytime anyone is on the cutting edge of anything, there are going to be some successes and there are going to be some blunders in processes as you set those up. And we find ourselves that we need to work through those processes, but the bottom line, even when we're working through those processes, is that we care about our students and we care about our staff, and we have a welcoming community and we have a welcoming culture in our school division, and that's what we want to promote.
I would just like to add, and with all due respect, to push back. I, we've talked about curriculum, we've talked about all kinds of issues, and when we dig too deep in curriculum, we get pushed back that the board is not a part of developing curriculum, that we might set, we do policy, but we shouldn't be in the weeds of curriculum. Textbooks are different than this specific curriculum and what applies to textbooks. We weren't delving into curriculum when we approved the textbooks. We were delving into which series we thought met our needs. And in this particular incident, what you're, the explanation you're giving is not making sense because if it's our policy and we do it this way, and then you pull it and then you put it back, at one point, one of those actions was wrong. And so, we need to be clear on what it is, and people challenge things in schools all the time. People challenge reading materials. If we're reading The Crucible and someone challenges it, you don't pull it for the whole class. You have some type of process with that teacher and that family. And so, the way you're explaining it, it's confusing and the plot, the process does not seem transparent, and it's frustrating. And it seems as if we're going against our own policy if, to pull it, like they were saying earlier, because one or two people commented on the use of a word, and it wasn't even more than that was pulled. So, and the things that were pulled were specific to LGBTQ curriculums. So, the process doesn't seem transparent. The explanation for why it got pulled and then why it got put back in isn't transparent. I don't even understand. When you're talking about textbooks, it's not the same thing, and I don't understand the policy or the reasoning behind it. And if it was an issue that would come to the board, why would you pull it without bringing it to us first?
Ms. Bryson Morrisburger, I'm sorry that you don't understand. However, I can give you what my, my explanation is, and I know that I give you a very transparent explanation. And you may not understand it and you may not accept it, but I know I'm giving you a very transparent and very forthright explanation as to what happened. Now, oftentimes, when a person doesn't agree with another person, regardless of what you say, it may not be received well.
I think that there are community members who were really, really hurt by this, as identified in our public comment, and I particularly appreciated the high school students. Ms. Green Marshall, Marshall, I hope I'm using the right pronoun for you, and I appreciated her comment about the curriculum and about gender identity because I think that, you know, she said something about how if they, if kids don't have the language, if grownups don't have the language. And I'm so excited that we are, are on the cutting edge of this, and I'm really grateful to have such forward-thinking staff and curriculum in our schools. And I look forward to the presentation in a couple of months to really present just that whole scope. I think identity is something that is critically important, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to tell our community how we are providing an inclusive and loving place for everyone. I do think that people in this instance were hurt, and I am sorry for that, and I am glad that the board took action as it did and that the lessons were restored. And I do think that the content of these lessons are the difference between this instance and like the literacy series of approval and the gifted and talented, gifted program changes as well. But I do think, just from the board's perspective, I, I know how us, you know, just, you know, frustrated and sad we were for the community members who were hurt by this decision, and I'm very grateful that we have restored those lessons and that we are going to showcase these lessons in the coming months when we have that opportunity or slightly more time on our agenda to talk about it.
So, Jennifer, I just want to chime in too. I'm excited as well, you know, as we move on, you know, you know, as I said before, is that we're in constant learning and improving mode in this whole situation, not only pertaining to this but to other things. And so, you know, we can always focus on what we, you know, what happened in the past, but I would like to spend energy on, let's get, get it right. And, and I think that that's what we're, we'll be doing when we look at this in the next couple of months or whenever it comes up.
Dr. Kraft, you're muted. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, just one, one piece I wanted to throw in that confused me about this was that the board, I thought, gave its very full-throated approval of the changing the narrative curricular effort, you know, the overarching theme of the changing the narrative. And because, you know, this is this area that we're talking about that was, you know, became controversial, is so clearly part of the narrative that needs to be changed. It didn't, it seemed to me that it fell under that umbrella very clearly. So, I then was kind of surprised and a little taken aback that, that those lessons were pulled because it seemed so well-aligned with the, the general changing the narrative approach that we did approve of.
And Dr. Kraft, I will tell you that we've been a part of a collaborative of seven school divisions in changing the narrative. Some of the work has been grant-funded, and we've been developing those lessons together. And some of the lessons that we have developed specifically in Charlottesville was ahead of that collaborative. So, the work that is going on, as we brought it to the school board earlier, much of that work was that collaborative work. And now Charlottesville has moved above that and beyond that collaborative work. And, and that now we will bring the rest of that back to the board so that the board will have an opportunity to review it in its entirety.
Are there any other?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a comment, if I may. One of the things that I heard Mr. Wade say early on was something that he remembered Ms. Johnson's saying, that trust is important. We've also heard Dr. Atkins speak on not only trust being important, but asking us to be patient because as Dr. Atkins expressed to Ms. Bryson Morrisburger, some conversations are more difficult for others. And sometimes, it's also difficult for people to hear what other people are saying. We are going to make missteps along the way. It doesn't mean that we don't trust what people are saying. It doesn't mean that we don't trust what is written, but what we are attempting to do is be inclusive of everyone. I don't know if any of you, whether you are listening or whether you are viewing, have looked at the composition of the Charlottesville City School Board. Our motto is every learner, every day, everyone. Our Charlottesville City School Board represents every learner, everyone, every day. You can look at a lot of school boards in the Commonwealth of Virginia. You can look at a lot of school boards in the Commonwealth of Virginia. But we represent every learner, everyone, every day. We respect each other, we agree without becoming disagreeable. And I must say that I have learned from each one of you this evening, from Ms. Bryson Morrisberger, Dr. Kraft, Ms. Torres, and Dr. Atkins. And I think what I have learned is going to help me be a better school board member and learn more. I work with children from all of the various groups that we have discussed this evening. And there may be something that I don't understand. But it is my job to read, to learn, and ask questions. And I continue to read and learn and ask questions, which makes me a learner every day. And so I trust that Ms. Bryson Morrisberger, Dr. Kraft, Ms. Torres, Ms. McKeever, and Mr. Wade and Mr. Bryant will help me continue to learn. But you all are a part of all of the various insundry committees that Dr. Atkins has asked us to be a part of. And so I'm learning from you, I am listening to you, and I am being patient. But I am trusting that the leadership will work with us. But I'm also trusting that when we make a misstep or when we fall, that we will pick ourselves up, we will dust ourselves off, and we will move forward. And when we make a mistake, we will admit that we've made a mistake. And I hope that when mistakes are made and we make those mistakes, because we are going to make mistakes, that when we acknowledge that we've made a mistake and we are sincere in acknowledging that we've had a misstep, that we can all find a way to move forward. This pandemic has put stresses on us that we cannot possibly imagine. And we are every learner, every day, everybody. We will have additional discussions around many, many topics between now and the end of this academic school year. And I hope that we will continue to be every learner, every day, everyone.
Okay, so I think um we have said many words. So if there's no other comments, we should, can move on to the next topic, if that's okay? Um, again, thank you for all the comments. And um, next up is Ms. Powell on enrollment update.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Atkins. Leslie, if you'll bring up the slides, please. This is a brief update, and the first slide simply shows um where we are versus what's called projected enrollment. And you, you see the projections, you see the actuals, and you see the differences. And um then there's a percentage variance provided in the far right uh column. You'll notice that, you know, most of our variance is in the um lower grades at the elementary school level, with the exception of Jackson Villa, which has in, you know, I don't know what the specific comings and goings are of students, but in the net, they have held their enrollment uh very close to projection. Uh, next slide, Leslie. So this, this is uh the report that we give annually that, that shows you where our class sizes are. You see again, Jackson Villa has more typical class sizes, but they're still within their um tolerance for class sizes. But you'll notice the other elementary class sizes are smaller than what we normally see. The good news is that this will support physical uh social distancing as we work to um have more face-to-face learning. So we'll, we'll look at the um silver lining and what could otherwise be perceived as a dark cloud. Next slide, Leslie. And so this is just a summary of what we saw heading into the school year, week to week, as we looked at our enrollment. So you can see, um, this is actually a comparison, not so much to projection, but where, when we were at where we thought we would be and then how the numbers kind of peeled off week by week. There is, again, um, I always like to look at the bright side. The good news, you'll see the difference between the fourteenth and the, and the twenty-first and what we're seeing for the week of the September twenty-eighth. It's leveling off, because there was a time period where we were like, when is the curve going to start to, you know, level out? And so we think we've seen that, that point. And I do want to point out, and there's an interesting article that's referenced here at the bottom, that public schools across the Commonwealth, this was as of September eighteenth, the projected enrollment loss was around thirty-five thousand students. And that was, quote, "so far." That was based on a vast survey and a hundred and thirteen of a hundred and thirty-three divisions across Virginia responded. And when I did the math on that thirty-five thousand, based on the last published, um, you know, statewide enrollment for the Commonwealth, it's somewhere between a three and four percent enrollment loss, and that's exactly the ballpark that we're looking at here locally. So I don't have any other information for you um this evening, but I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you, Kim. I'm glad to see those numbers.
Leveling off.
Leveling off, it's very nerve-wracking.
It was.
But we understand that, you know, families are making choices for their um families, and we understand that completely. Um, it's uh, I'm very grateful for our teachers for making virtual as good as possible for them and their students. And I'm just really looking forward to keep moving on and, and talking about how we can get back face-to-face and um, you know, moving forward. So thank you, Kim. Any questions, Ms. Perry?
Um, Ms. Powell, I know that you are talking about the three percent um loss, approximately a hundred-ish students. Do you feel, I know that has bu- budget implications. What does that mean from a budget implication standpoint? And do you feel that once the face-to-face comes back, regardless of how it comes back, that we would have another uptick? Because one of the things you did say, or either Dr. Atkins said, I can't remember. Um, well, it may not have even been Dr. Atkins, but that's not the issue. With the decrease in numbers and our social distancing requirements at this point in time, even though there's a budgetary loss, how does that play out as it relates to social distancing with the big picture? Am I making any sense?
I think so. I, I believe I can answer your questions. So, first of all, I believe our ADM, average daily membership, which is a different number than enrollment, that is something that is um, the first snapshot of that that goes to the state is based off of a September thirtieth snapshot. But there's work still being done with our um Power School team to uh check that data in any way, arrive at our official report, which is that first ADM. That determines, that sets the compass, if you will, for our monthly state payments until March. And then there's another, that's the, the most important snapshot of ADM is March. Because then what happens is they will adjust our payments either up or down from March until the end of the year. So that, that March ADM is actually as if that's the, the um, the membership for the whole, the whole school year. So March is the, is the big one. Um, base, I, right now, it's looking like the ADM uh loss will be somewhere between, I think, a hundred and fifty to upwards of two hundred students. Again, I don't, we don't have that finalized. I've run a number of different projections with that range between a hundred and seventy-three and a hundred and ninety-one. Um, but our data, our data team hasn't finalized those numbers quite yet. In dollars, that's going to be somewhere in the ballpark of four hundred and eighty to five hundred thousand dollars. But the CARES money, there are two, you know, that is something that we've been bracing for a number of things, right? We've been bracing for sales tax loss and um bracing for, you know, ADM loss if we, um, being virtual. So um, those are things that as we work our way through the year and we're looking at the different buckets of CARES money that are made available to us, we know that there's a piece of that work that has to, you know, be, for lack of a better term, a revenue hedge, if you, if you will, because the other alternative is, you know, really, you all know very well from balancing our budgets in hard times, the only place we can really recover, the only place where there's significant dollars is in people, because we're a people business. And so we're not looking at making those kinds of changes, because ironically, with social distancing, you need all hands on deck, because your classrooms go from twenty or so kids down to, you know, fifteen, if you're lucky, in a classroom, or twelve. Some will accommodate, so we need all hands on deck. Um, so it's part of the balancing act, but we're not sounding alarm bells this evening, because there's a broad recognition of this. You know, there's another wave of CARES money that's slated to come for schools. We've already gone through, you know, the initial plus the, the, I think it's called Gears, forgive me. I, I don't keep the acronyms straight with the awards, but there's, we're looking at the awards, awards set number three um coming, you know, coming forward at some point between now and the end of the year. And so we keep all these things in mind when we're looking at those available funds and what, what can be done, what needs to be done.
We will have the General Assembly, we'll weigh in, sorry, Kim. The General Assembly will be weighing in, and there's some discussion about um ADM loss and um a discussion as to how the General Assembly may support school divisions during this time and whether or not there will be additional allocations out to the schools um based on that loss of ADM and um a local composite index effects.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Atkins, and I apologize, I was just asking, Ms. Perry, did that answer the question?
Yes, 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 yes.
Who else has a question? Mr. Wade, you're on mute if you're talking to us.
Sorry, um, I had a, a question or a comment about, do we know um why, and you may have mentioned this, I've been fading in and out, um, or the computer has, um, on why the high school is up forty students and, and, and Jackson Villa, why didn't it experience some of the um decrease as the other elementary schools?
Okay, so with Jackson Villa, I don't know. I don't know how they have um not experienced the same wave of choices that seem to have impacted the other lower grades. I, I'm, I don't know. With the high school, I don't even have, I haven't even had the time to make a good guess or to dig in to try to figure out what the dynamic is there that has made Jackson Villa different. Um, I don't know if there's something, like a couple of years back, that um a large development on the corner of Fifth Street there, you know, that opened up and we saw a big spike. I don't know if there's something with housing and an influx of families that's happened there. I'm not aware of anything new. I don't know if new sections of something, I don't, I don't know. And I should take time to find out, but I honestly just haven't. But I was pleased to see that they held their numbers. Um, but the high school, we always ha- we see um, you know, growth there um at times. And I think the reason that they're still growing despite whatever choices people may be making is that the growth wave from the past, remember, that's rolling into Beaufort and rolling into the high school now, that big spike of growth that we had um a few years back. It leveled off the last couple of years, but prior to that, remember, our growth curve was relatively steep. Um, and so you, there's the, the residual of that is now reaching these upper schools. And I do think in general, you don't, um, and this is across the Commonwealth, a lot, the, most of the enrollment laws where families have made different choices have been with their younger students, because the older students perhaps do better with the virtual option. Not that saying that that's true for all students, but perhaps in general.
I just really appreciate those families who have been um, who maybe don't have as many choices as other, as other families in our community and acknowledge them and say thank you. And also, we are delivering a high-quality product for you, and we will continue to work hard to meet your students' needs. Anybody else have any questions or thought, comments? Okay, so thank you, Ms. Powell, for that update. Um, the next item on our agenda is the proposed budget calendar, Ms. Hoover.
Good evening, um.
Hey, Leslie, can we get that on the, thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for, for your kind words on the budget award. I, I really appreciate that. Um, it's hard to believe that uh we are looking at budget development for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. It just seems like we just wrapped up uh twenty-twenty-one um just a month or two ago. This uh calendar that you have in front of you, uh, follows the same format that we have used in prior years. We have worked out uh most of the dates, except for the uh joint meeting with city council. That date is uh still in a to-be-determined uh state. Um, I, I don't have anything else to add. Is there any questions or comments?
Anybody have any comments or questions?
Um, I just want to add on, we really don't know, you know, um, what the environment will be like as far as social distancing. Um, and um, we just, I think this is something that we all must shoulder, that um we just have to take extra effort to get input from all aspects of the community. Um, in addition to the, the Zoom and virtual, um, somehow, if we have to make, you know, calls to different stakeholders and get that input, just, we just need to do as much as we can in, in this environment to get around a wide range of input.
Good point, Mr. Wade. Any other comments or questions? Okay, um, I don't think we need to approve that right now, correct, Ms. Hoover?
No, we'll bring that back next month for approval.
Um, I, you know, a lot of transitions happening right now in the city. And um, so we're just going to be working really closely with the city in, on this transition and um, in this budget process. So just a lot of variables and a lot of unknowns. Um, okay, so the next item is the um long-awaited advisory committee update, Ms. Dr. Baptist.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, Leslie, will you pull that up, please? As we get started, um, I want to thank the entire committee. I want to thank the entire team here at um school board office and in the schools for all of the help. This really has been a group effort, it's not just one person leading it. And as you can see, the committee members, we have quite a few. And I know there's some that have been left off because they've been added in the last few days. But we have a wide variety of our community and our school division who are working with this. And I want to thank everyone who has spent three Wednesday afternoons with us to get to the point where we are. And we do not have a recommendation yet, but we are, we're working together as a committee. Next slide, please, Leslie. So the, the purpose of the committee, and we shared this at our first meeting, was really to, to start getting the data from everywhere. And it changes every week. So we can't really say this is the data, this is the way we need to go. Um, it does change, we've been getting information from the CDC, Virginia Department of Health, Thomas Jefferson Health Department. All of these acronyms that we can have are all these initials. Discuss possible options for an instructional model moving forward. We know we started with predominantly virtual, but to get the committee to help us with possible other options. And then to make a recommendation to the superintendent regarding which model we think is um the better model for our families. And then to uh have the superintendent come to the school board with a model for approval and then continue with this process until our schools are able to open full-time. We know that a model will be presented, and that is to get us going. We don't know what is going to happen as this goes forward. We may be able to start with one model and move to another, or it may be that we have to go back to virtual, depending on what happens with, with COVID. So we will, this committee will still be with us until we can be fully opened. Next slide. So we've had the three meetings, you can see the dates there, the sixteenth, twenty-third, and thirtieth. Uh, given the group a week off this week because they had some homework to do. And we will come back together on October the fourteenth and then back on the twenty-eighth. And we may have to have other meetings beyond that, and know we will have other meetings beyond that, but didn't want to uh have them too far out. I heard several of the folks yesterday say they're just holding Wednesday afternoons for COVID. So we will see where we go with that. Next slide, please. So review of data. This is not just an update of the committees, but we've been updating you with data at the last few meetings, so I wanted to make sure we did that. This is a continuation of the information that Ryan McKay has been sharing with us, and this is the most recent that we have. You can see that it is, um, from the last three weeks, and you can see the cumulative cases that Charlottesville has had. You can see the rolling seven day cases. You can see the percent positive, and these are all just for Charlottesville. The color coding when Dr. Bonds first shared this with us was red, orange and yellow, or maybe, I've forgotten all the colors. But anyway, they've changed the color scheme now, and you're going to see more about this in a minute, but just so that you could see the continuing, I wanted to share this slide with you. Next, Leslie. And as I said, things change. So Monday morning, uh, Dr. Lane and from State Superintendent and members of the Virginia Department of Health shared with us a new CDC metric system looking at the risk of transmission in our schools. So one of the goals from the Virginia Department of Health and, and not really the goal of CDC, but the Virginia Department of Health is to pull this information together so we have one place to go for information and not trying to pull it from so many different places. This does have five levels of risk, highest, higher, moderate, lower and lowest. Now, this information, and I'm going to show you our information in another format in a second, but this information is updated daily. And I can assure you, I am updating it daily and I've got it recorded in a couple of different ways and places because different people taking information differently. When we look at it, though, this information that is on here, if you look at the very top of the slide, you can see Charlottesville City and you can see nine twenty-eight. This was the first date that this was, um, offered in this format to us. I'm going to show you data from yesterday in a second. But the first day, it shows number of new cases per hundred thousand within the last fourteen days. And I have to admit, when I saw that number, it, it stunned me because I knew we had not had six hundred and twenty-three cases in the last fourteen days. But we have to realize that that hundred thousand is a standardization across the state or the Commonwealth. And we don't have a hundred thousand in Charlottesville, so ours is pretty much doubled since we're about half. So it was not six hundred and twenty-three cases. It was more like little over three hundred cases, which I'm not happy about three hundred cases. But it was not six twenty-three. On that particular date, looking at our average of the positivity rate for fourteen days, we were at five percent. We know we want to keep that lower than that. The third core indicator is looking at five medication strategies that school divisions can put into place, and they don't rate us on these. We sort of rate ourselves, and you're going to see more about this in a few minutes. Kim Powell is going to share some more information about that, so just know that that metric is one that localities will score themselves. Okay, Leslie? And then the next indicators are really secondary indicators. Uh, Charlottesville City is considered the northwest region as far as, uh, localities go, which sort of surprised me. I've always thought of us as the central region, but the way that the Virginia Department of Health classifies us, we're in the northwest region, as is Fairfax County and, and all of that group. So when I see regional data, I realize we're being compared with lots of other people. The first of the secondary, um, metric levels is the percent change in, in new cases per hundred thousand in the last seven days. So we went down sixteen percent, and that is just Charlottesville from the week before. Now, the others are regional data. So when we see the seventy-nine percent for hospital beds in the region, that is not just Charlottesville because every locality does not have a hospital. So they do this on the region, so this would be the northwest region, all the hospitals here through Fairfax County. We've got seventy-nine percent available beds. Then you look at, um, how many are occupied by COVID patients out of the entire large region. Twenty, two-point-four percent are, um, in the hospitals with COVID. So again, most of the indicators at the beginning are Charlottesville specific, but when we start getting into hospital beds, then that is when it becomes a regional number. Okay? So this is what we looked at yesterday. Um, my fancy handwriting on there, and we show it in the columns with the different metrics. So yesterday we had, our number was six hundred and forty-six point three in the fourteen days, so we were in the highest risk level for transmission. Yesterday we were down to four-point-nine percent with, um, positivity, so we were in the lower risk. Uh, you're going to hear more about the mitigation, uh, measures in a, a few minutes, although we believe we are in the lowest risk level. We were at minus seventeen percent from the previous seven days. And then again, the regional data, hospital beds, we had actually more hospital beds available yesterday than we did Monday. And the regional for COVID beds stayed a little over two percent. So I'm gathering this data every day and looking, and, and looking at it every day really doesn't show that much change. But hopefully we will see some numbers change, and this senses six hundred and forty-six number is based on our daily cases, even though it's at, oh, um, based on a hundred thousand. As we see days where we have big drops in cases, we should see this number change, so I will have that information if anybody asks. Okay, so summary of the meetings. How have our meetings gone? Next slide, please. First meeting was on September sixteenth. We talked about what the purpose was. We talked about the path to the present, where we had been from the middle of March until September the sixteenth. We shared data and metrics from the Virginia Department of Health. And administration offered a draft proposal to begin the conversation. It was not intended to be, this is what we are going to do. This was just to get the conversation rolling because sometimes you have to have something to start the conversation. It certainly doesn't have to be where you end up, but we wanted to get started. Okay? And after that meeting, we received a lot of feedback from what people thought about what we had shared. I know the school board received feedback. So what was some of the summary that we received? We know that our teachers want to see our students, and we're very glad about that. We also know that people were confused about, um, in the proposal, changing the timeline on it, about, uh, number of cases, especially with UVA being back. Um, concerned about relationships, we've talked about that. Everyone wanted to know how people will be assigned and how students will be assigned when we return. They wanted to know about space configurations and wanted to know about daily health checks. So we got lots of feedback on questions that people had. But one of the pieces that really made us feel good was that overwhelmingly, teachers said, we want to see our students. They didn't give us a day they wanted to see them. But they wanted to get back into learning face to face when it was going to be safe for everyone. Okay, next slide, please. So we took a step back. All of that feedback told us we needed to listen some more. So that meeting, uh, last week, we listened to more to the committee, to our employees and the total community. We updated the data. We shared some possible cohorts and models that had been reviewed earlier in, in the summer and asked the committees to go into breakout groups to discuss these models again to give us some more information and some more feedback. After that, we felt like that we really were not getting to the point that we wanted to come up with a proposed model. And so we wanted to look at doing something a little bit differently. Leslie? So we met, I guess that was yesterday. Um, and we shared lots of information again with the group. We updated the information and data that I've just shared with you. We told the committee about some of the models that were being used in other divisions and how they were looking at making some changes. We, um, had three breakout groups that are going to continue meeting, the elementary group, the secondary group and the facilities group, and gave the groups a worksheet of various topics that would need to be thought about and added some information in there of what we know, meaning what we know here within the school system. Then so that people didn't have to ask, well, I wonder if we could do this or what is the answer to this? We tried to put some guiding information, not proposals of what we thought it needed to be, but just some objective statements that might help in the decision making. Um, and we, we told the group that, well, we gave the group another, um, information too. Some of the timing that we might need to think about once a model is recommended, because if we make a decision on whatever date, it's not like we can fully open or open to that model the very next day. We need to think about some things that need to happen in there. So again, we had the three groups and they were given the task of creating a proposed model, giving us some timelines, what metrics they would like to see us use or think we need to be using to help in making this decision. And then the facilities group is focusing more on the mitigation strategies. And we're not meeting next week, but when the groups, the entire committee comes back on October the fourteenth, we want to talk about what are the proposals at that time. So what are the, the, uh, documents that we gave the group? Uh, the what we know document that I mentioned, the calendar for next year so that they can, or for this year so they can see that. Uh, information about how to get to the Department of Ed, Department of Health, excuse me, uh, data that I've shared with you, some interim guidance. Um, the transmission risk that I just went over with you, mitigation measures, which Kim is going to go through in just a second, which is a part of that CDC information that we shared. And one of the issues that many people have asked is how will we be notified when things happen or what sort of communication will we have? Well, we'll develop ours specifically for Charlottesville, but we shared some examples of communication that other school divisions have done when they have encountered cases in their school division. So before I go to the next thing, if we can click on the mitigation measures, uh, related and let Kim tell you about that, and then we'll get back to the rest of this.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Dr. Baptist. So if you're able to see, I don't know how large this is appearing on your, your screens, but, um, in the first column, what you see are, um, five mitigation measures that are the, what the CDC has put forth as the, um, the standard, if you will, to assess your readiness or your risk level in your school. And these five mitigation measures are consistent and correct use of masks, social distancing to the largest extent possible, hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette, cleaning and disinfection and contact tracing in collaboration with the local, with local health department. So, uh, in the green area to the right of those five measurements, um, I mean, the long story short, we are and would remain in the green for all of these, uh, measures, but I know there are other considerations as well, so we're going to go through this whole list quickly. For masks and face coverings, there's a policy that was put forth months ago. Times kind of all run together for me, but the link to the policy is there. We, long and short, we are requiring them. Uh, we ask that students and staff would bring them from home, but we will have them available should someone forget or need, need one or, um, so that's not going to be an issue. Um, we also will have face shields as well as an additional, um, measure on top of or in addition to the masks. Social distancing, um, will use floor markers to reinforce where, um, furniture needs to be placed and where it needs to stay to maintain six, six foot separation. There are numerous floor stickers that say, please wait here and six feet apart and directional arrows that we've, um, ordered the custom ones um, with the school logos and such, and they are all slated for delivery no later than the end of next week, so those will all be, um, going down. Plus signage for stairwells that indicate the direction to help ensure that people, you know, don't crowd. Um, we've already installed plexi dividers in, uh, reception areas and we provided movable, uh, plexi barriers for all the schools and for special ed in certain areas where they, they need to assess students so that, um, if, if a teacher is working with a student in an assessment or something like that, they can put the barrier between them. Uh, seats will be, bus seating is limited, but, and it will be assigned. I think that covers most everything related to distancing. For hand hygiene, we, uh, rolled out large gallons of hand sanitizer for all the classrooms a while back. The transportation team has equipped the buses with hand sanitizer so that when students board the bus, they can get hand sanitizer there. And we just, um, we rolled out the first wave of the, um, hand sanitizer stations, the freestanding ones. So they, those would need to be deployed at all student entrances, and I'm sure as the schools finalize their physical preparations, we'll get a, a sec, we'll need to place a second round of orders for the freestanding hand sanitizer stations, but they would be at all of the entrances. Um, for cleaning protocols, we have a daily cleaning plan template that we rolled out to all the schools for the custodians to work with the administration to daily go through the checklist and document what they have done uh, to keep everything routine. We also have a room tag system, red, yellow and green, that helps the staff and the custodial team know exactly the status of each room. And then we have, we're, we've, uh, rolled out, um, our, our, um, EPA list in, uh, product, which is Spick and Span. Um, but it is rated to as appropriate product to address COVID. It's on the EPA N list, and we purchased extra bottles with microfiber cloths for every classroom for teachers to help address high touch areas throughout the day, and so they have that right at hand whenever they want to wipe something down, in addition, of course, to the supplies and what the custodians will do. We also have a lot of new custodial equipment that does fogging and electrostatic spraying. Uh, and the buses will all have the handheld electrostatic sprayers as well. Um, contact tracing. Uh, we, um, already have been doing this with staff as, as applicable since the onset of all of this in March, and we will be prepared with all the proper protocols um, to readily collaborate with the health department when there are cases in the schools and, um, that's, you know, not an issue. Then there are other mitigation measures. There's other signage beyond the floor stickers. There's mirror clings and pop-up banners and A-frame signs that all uh, reinforce the key practices and, um, go into more detail in some cases about like self-screening and all of that. So constant reminders and messaging with the signage. Um, with health screening, we have the, um, touchless, uh, temperature scanning equipment that's going to be mounted on the buses so that when students board the bus, the protocol will be, they temperature scan there in front of the bus driver and they get, they put the hand sanitizer on. When students arrive at school, there'll be designated entrances, what for like the, the bus, the children coming from the bus will arrive through one entrance. Uh, car, people who come by car will go in another, and then those, they'll need to be in, uh, entrance designated for people who, for students who ride bikes, walk, scooters, whatever. So each building has to determine which, which students will enter through which entrances. But when they arrive, if they come off the bus because they've just been scanned, they could come in directly and maybe just hit the hand sanitizer one more time as they walk in. But for, um, students who are arriving by car or other means, um, what we've seen work well in other school districts is either using the, the scanners we have, the mounted ones or the, um, handheld. You just check every child's temperature, and if you have a lot of staff out, like multiple staff, because you have a car line, you're scanning the students and you're giving them a, like a laminated card with a big check mark on it, and they walk in so that they know, people know they were scanned right at the entrance, they hand sanitize, drop their card in the bucket, because we'll spray all those down for use the next day and you, you proceed on from there. Um, and then, of course, anytime someone has a concern, administration and the medical staff or a teacher, if they want to refer a student to be screened, we can do more in-depth screening based on whatever the currently recommended screening criteria are. And we will be prepared to do that. Uh, we will have, and we have already, um, gotten in some additional PPE for staff who will need it in certain areas, whether it's, um, any staff who work with students in medical situations or for personal care, and like in our sped team. Um, for example, we'll have the gowns and, um, of course gloves and, uh, the face shields to wear in addition to the masks. We have plenty of face shields, plenty of masks. And then last but not least, um, the air ventilation and filtration, that is a big topic. The filters, um, are already installed and in the process of being installed, I ha, I do have confirmation they were received from all school, for all schools. And by filters, I mean, we're following, the city is following the ashtray recommendations to install the highest MERV rated filters that the equipment will support. Not all equipment has a frame or to support MERV thirteen or fourteen. But if it'll support seven or eight or whatever, you put in the best filters you can is the bottom line. And there's new technology that is supposed to be commercially available or new media that's supposed to be commercially available by the end of the year to make better filters available even, you know, for more, a broader spectrum of equipment. In addition to that, the city is, sets the, the dampers to be open to support maximum outdoor air exchange whenever buildings are, you know, operating at close to normal or higher occupancy levels. But there's a second level, there's another wave of mitigation measures that we're looking to implement beyond those baseline recommendations. And those are things that have to do with UVC lights, bipolar ionization and air scrubbers. And that really needs to be probably an entire separate presentation, perhaps sometime, or we'll make a document available that people can read if they want to, because there's a lot of details there. But the city is working with us to put out an IFB next week to get the bids, and we're going to be working through that process as quickly as possible to get another layer of mitigation measures or improvements in place in this area of air handling. So more to come with that as we move along. But that's an area where what we're looking to do exceeds what a lot of other school divisions have been doing or, or have done. So very grateful for the support of the city and city council and the city facilities maintenance team in working with us to pursue that next level of mitigation measures.
Okay. If we can go back to the next slide, please. So as I said a minute ago, we did give the committee or the smaller committees a slide to ask them to think about timelines. We know that everything cannot happen overnight. There's some steps that are going to have to happen once a decision is made. It's got to come to the school board. We've got to have our intent forms to find out, you know, what students are coming back and, you know, what, depending on our process, it'll take some time to go through those. For buses, it's going to take some time to get the buses routed and then letting parents know about bus transportation. We do know that we don't want buses to be a reason that we want, wouldn't be able to start at a particular time. We may have to phase in some of our bus riding to be able to get our schools open. So these are just some of the potential timelines that we would be looking at. But our first priority, once we know that it's safe and once we have the model, is to get our students in, into school with the model that is selected. Okay, next one. So what's, what's next? We will have the breakout groups are meeting, and I know some of them have meetings already scheduled for follow-up from yesterday. We will meet on the 14th to receive the models, provide feedback about the models. And at that time, it may be that recommendations are provided to the superintendent, or it may be decided that we need more work done on the model. So just have to see what happens on the, the 14th. We have no preconceived notions of what that will be. And so when the proposed model is ready, superintendent will make the recommendation and to the school board for approval. And then the committee, as I said early into this, will continue to meet as needed on a somewhat regular basis until we are able to get all of our schools back fully open the way we need and want them to be. So that is where we are right now. Now, I know a few minutes ago, there was a question about virtual learning and what's going well and not going well. I've asked Ms. Thacker to have a couple of slides that we had prepared about what's going well and, and some challenges. And I know this print is small, and even with contacts and reading glasses, I can barely see it. But wanted to make sure that you did know that we are looking at what's going well and what some of our challenges are. And Ms. Ivory worked with some folks to get some of this information for us. You can see it came from elementary teacher content survey, talking to administrators, some of our coaches. So we do have a full list of things that are going well in the virtual arena. And virtual works very well for many students. We've had great attendance in many of the classes. There's been great engagement, and I'm not going down this whole list for you because you can certainly read it yourself. But there have been some things that people have been very pleased about. And I also realize that perception is reality. And one aspect, some people may think it's really going well, and some people may see that as a challenge. So we realize anytime we get information, we have to look at it from, from both sides. So this shows what are some of the aspects that are going well based on the survey administrators and coaches. And then if you can share the challenges slide, and then there's some of the challenges. I mean, we're always going to have challenges with whatever model that we do. We've heard some of these more than some of the others. And they're going to be technology issues just because it's, it's technology. There are going to be parents that are concerned about the screen time, about instructions and routines taking longer. There, I mean, there are just various things that are going to be different in a virtual world rather than in the face-to-face. So just know that we have looked at both sides of this. I know I've shared a lot, and if there are any questions, I will be glad to try to answer them. Are any of my trusted senior staff members or Dr. Atkins that are also available to help?
Thank you, Dr. Baptist and Ms. Powell. Appreciate your efforts there. Also, Ms. Torres and I have been there, so if you guys have any questions for us, we're happy to help too.
I should have said all the questions went to the two of you, I'm sorry.
That's, yeah, we'll defer to the staff, obviously. But yeah, so who would like to go first?
I have a question to start with to follow up from the last meeting with the percentages and the numbers. Did we find out if the UVA numbers are being credited here or in the student's home state? And do the percentages you showed us for Charlottesville address? I was reading recently about the rapid test available for some athletes maybe at UVA and how the multiple testing for them coming back negative inflates the numbers for the community as a whole. So I was wondering if the percentages included that? Or that's taken into account, or, you know, the address thing for the students where their test is credited?
It's very confusing, and I keep asking the, the same questions. The UVA numbers do affect the Charlottesville numbers. Generally, the students who live off grounds, most of them live within the city of Charlottesville, so they are counted in the Charlottesville numbers. Another page that I look at every day is the UVA tracker. Now, I can't look at the tracker and do a one-to-one correspondence under our numbers, but if I see a day that their numbers are higher, then I sort of expect the next day we may see higher Charlottesville numbers. So they are in there. Now, I think, and it's never been fully explained, I, I think that they are counted here in Charlottesville because this is where they are currently residing. But if they gave an address outside of this area, it could be that it's counted there. But most of them are being counted here. The students living on grounds and dormitories are pretty much counted in the county because the dorms are located in the county. Now, your question about the percent for positivity, yes. The tests that are being conducted for the UVA athletes is going into making our, setting that percentage. And that could be, I, I can't say it's absolutely, but I can say it is likely that that's one of the reasons that our positivity rate has gone down because we've had more testing, which that would make the denominator and that, that factor be higher, which will make the number go down. We have asked if the UVA numbers can be separated out from the Charlottesville and our Albemarle numbers, and they cannot, partially because of confidentiality reasons. And also, they're living here. So even if we take them out, they're still living in, in our community. So we can't totally discount the fact that we have people in the city limits who have tested positive. Did I answer all of that, Ms. Bryson?
Yes, yes, yes. And then a few more questions. That we, I've seen emails from families asking for four full days, two days back. And do we have the capa, do we even have the capacity for space and teachers and social distancing to even consider coming back four days a week?
It is something that we are really looking at, and we would have to know before we can fully answer that question, what percentage of families would choose to come back now? If we went with a four day, we may have some families that don't choose to come back, and we would have enough capacity. If all 100% wanted to come back, we would have to come up with or have some challenges on what to do next, both space-wise and staffing-wise. So until we have a model that, that parents can respond to with their intentions, some of that is hard to answer. We've talked today, almost every decision we make about this is a chicken and an egg sort of thing. Do, if we have the model, and then the parents tell us what they're going to do and staff, or do we have them tell us what they're going to do and then hopefully match a model? So we would have to look at what we have at the time that a model is done and what the intent forms say and see what we could then do staff-wise and space-wise.
Can we poll for both options? I know the two-day-a-week is popular and the four-day-a-week is popular. Is it possible to poll for both?
Well, we've talked about that, but we don't know what the model will be on October the 14th. The committee may come up with something entirely different than anything we've thought about. So we don't want to try to have the community think that it's going to be this or that. We would love to know what our model is going to be, and it may be that it's a two-day, or it may be that it's a four-day. Or we know we've got some very smart people on the committee. They may come up with something that we have never thought about. We've, we've kind of toyed around with some, some thoughts that it could be, and there's some exciting out-of-the-box thinking. So it's, we don't want to poll until we know what the recommendation is.
And then last question is, is the committee considering a model like Albemarle is doing right now? Where in-person is offered to those with special needs or people with internet access problems, or, you know, families where the parent can't telework? Is that being addressed in the discussions? Like not bringing everyone back, but bringing back those most in need to be back? Who, you know, who could opt into it when we identify like special groups of people that need to, that virtual isn't working for?
That is certainly in the mix as far as the discussions go. You heard tonight how students with disabilities will be offered some opportunities for coming back. And we've been trying to work with families that have the internet issues. I know it's not perfect, but I think as we move forward, seeing what the committee is recommending, we will try to get the students who have most needs in, but there's no set plan for it. But we do want the students who need us the most to get back to us as quickly as possible.
Bryson Morrisburger, we also have been looking at contingency plans and overflow space in case we do have more families opting for the face-to-face at whatever time that might be. How might we use some of the spaces in our community in order to house our students? Should we get to that point that we need the overflow space?
Hey, who has another question? Who would like to go next, Ms. Perrier? Ms. Perrier?
My quest, yes, my questions, I think, are with Dr., I mean, no, let me see. I think with Ms. Powell. So I'm concerned about our mitigation, and I'm glad that she was able to discuss that. I know we have a lot of these supplies now. I know that we have some instructors in the building, you know, teaching virtually. What impact is that going to have, Ms. Powell? Because when you, when we bring students back face-to-face, that's going to include additional work. It's one thing to have five, 10, or 15 people in the building. It's another thing to have socially distant implies that there's going to be additional work for our custodial staff. There's going to be additional work for the instructors that they don't have now because there's nobody in their room other than them. So do we do a practice run? How does that work? You, you know, I, you know, how does that go? And then will there be additional training required for our custodial staff or for our instructors? Because maybe there's a particular way that you have to wipe down a desk. And then what about our bathrooms? Because you've got children in the building that may be needing to go to the bathroom more than an adult.
So, okay, I'll try to answer all of those. So the first thing that's important is that, you're right, we do have a lot of things that now that we're talking about going with face-to-face, we have to put, put it all out and get everything set up and get our classrooms set up. And the good news is, in a lot of ways, that's not as daunting as it may seem. We have a plan, and I started today at one of our schools. I'm going to another one tomorrow and more next week. And we're, I'm working with them through, it's actually called a COVID operations building prep checklist that just goes step by step through all the different pieces that they have to address. Everything from, you know, setting the furniture in position and making sure the, the markers are on the floor as to where the furniture goes, getting the signage in place. I'm assessing the quarantine area for each space, school, and where they're storing their COVID supplies. We've set minimum supply levels. We have a form where they can request their replenishments. I've given them minimum thresholds for whoever's monitoring the stock so they know how to handle that. So we'll work with them from our central supply. I mean, there are a lot of details, and that truly is always where the devil lies, but we just have to pay attention to those things. There was, you asked me a lot of questions, I want to make sure I can answer all of them. So I do think it's doable. With regards to our custodians, they had special training the week of the 19th of September. Hold on, I can tell you the day. It was, I think, week before last. Yeah, it was actually on September 15th, all of our custodians. We took them in, we had them in in two batches. And they had, we had guest lectures who talked about everything from, you know, general COVID awareness and knowledge to the proffered donning and doffing of addition, you know, gowns and masks and additional training on the new equipment that they have. And I, I was intending to actually participate in that training with them. Unfortunately, I was called into other meetings, but from everything I've heard, it went very well. We've been working with Ann Sandridge and our special ed team on different videos and so forth for the special ed folks who are starting to meet with students face-to-face to make sure they watch these videos before, you know, they start meeting with students. So there are things like that that we've been doing on a smaller scale, and we'll just have to scale that up further. We actually have a video that we developed for staff months back, but we've kind of held off on releasing that. That was a training video that we, about our, our mitigate, basic mitigation protocols. What we see in a lot of other school divisions is they'll do a video at each school that with, with the folks at the school, the principals, that can kind of help inform students and families before they come back. I think that's something we'll certainly want to have in our arsenal. It's just some simple little videos that show what it's going to look like when you arrive at school and things like that. So those are all things that, you know, we, we now need to make sure we have them ready to go. And there's, there's a plan for all of that. It's not a big unknown as to what we need to do. We're going to be much more specific with our principals. Some of these things I've been communicating with principals since the summer, but now we just have to make sure that we, every school is at the same place and being ready for, with these things. You asked other questions, Ms. Perrier. Oh, custodial staff, I should also mention, we have a, a company lined up to provide supplemental custodial services as needed for both subs or if we need to do. But I, I think it's more likely we would use them for subs if we have folks out. But we could also use them to come in and do intensive area cleaning if we needed to. We have a rate for that as well, so does the city. Please tell me if I, if there are other questions that were in there that I've missed.
You got them all, and I have one other question. And I don't know if it goes to Dr. Baptist or Dr. Atkins. It's piggybacking on Ms. Bryson Morrisburger's question when she was talking about locations for our students. We have done a lot of work with community partners so that the students whose parents cannot be at home, they are at the Y, they're at Walker, the Girls and Boys Club, et cetera, et cetera. With us looking at, at some point, no dates given, face-to-face, how does that impact those organizations that are helping us now with our students?
So we've been talking So we've been talking with them about that since the beginning, what does that look like? And so um, the Boys and Girls Club, for example, they were only scaling to the, to the capacity or the amount of what they could actually serve when they drop back to the club space. Because right now they're not using their club space. Um, they're just using Buford. So the Boys and Girls Club has that plan. And then with the Y, it's similar. Um, although I think the Y has scaled more to meet the need. I don't know if they could, but at the same time, the demand for the services should drop down as we move into meeting face to face. To give you a definitive answer as to what it looks like and what the potential issues could be. Unfortunately, I can't say until I know which model we use to go back to face to face. I don't know what potential concerns there could be until we know what model we would use. But for example, and this is not, no, no decisions that we made, but if we used a four day, then you have that fifth day. We would need to figure out what kind of demand there is for that fifth day. Um, but I don't know that we can make the buildings available for them for the day five, because that's a day that we have plans for with deep cleaning. You know, professional work, the, the teachers, many of our teachers are already working in the building. So um, I, I can't totally say, I know with the Boys and Girls Club that they um, at the last time I talked with James Pierce about their numbers. They could fall back to the club space and they could serve the same number of students. With the Y, um, they've been, I think they've been scaling more. And so I'm not sure how that relates. Plus with the Y over at Brooks, um, there are some county um, students there as well.
Thank you. You've, thank you. You've given me enough information to process with the information that we had from the presentation. So thank you very much.
Reid?
Yes, um, I, um, I think that all my concerns at this point have been covered. My, my main thrust, and this has been said numerous times about Dr. Atkins and, and other presenters, is that I would like to get all of us students back as soon as possible, but it's sa- safe as, as well. Um, and I'm glad that at the very least, you know, it sounds like, you know, I may be jumping ahead. But no matter what comes up, we're going to make an effort to get our most vulnerable students back in the classroom, maybe before the, the, um, as soon as possible. And um, so I'm, I'm just really looking forward. I don't want to jump too much on um, the committee work. Um, I really re- respect the time and the effort and the understanding, the, the, the difficulty of their decisions. And, and I think that everybody is seeing now the role that the public schools play in our everyday society. So many people have lost their jobs or can't go back to work because of childcare, because of, you know, waiting for us to make a, a decision. And we're, we want to do it, but we want it to be a safe environment for the students and the teachers to come back, um, and so this is just really difficult and I just wish it would go away, but it won't. We have to deal with it. A time will take care of this, but in, in, until then, we just have to take these steps. Because we want to educate them, the students, but we want them to, it to be safe. And we want our teachers to feel like they're safe and that they can teach without worrying about um, the virus. And, and, and so I appreciate the, the work of the committee and I look forward to their work over the next two or three weeks.
Thanks, Ms. Reid. Dr. Craft?
Yes, I'll, I'll be quick. Um, first I, I want to give a huge thank you to you guys um, for all of this work. Um, and to Dr. Atkins too, for just the huge amount of work and the amount of detail that goes into all of these decisions. Kim, I just, I always marvel at your ability to manage like thousands of details at once. And you know, it's incredible and it's very much appreciated. Um, what I wanted to do, my, my question um, really circles back to uh, for Dr. Baptist. Um, these, the question of the, the new cases in the community. And I imagine, you know, for myself and I imagine for the public, when you see that big red, you know, the bit, the number and, and it's all in red and we're at the highest level, um, it's very alarming to people and it's hard to understand. You've, you've explained it a little bit, um, but I guess I'm wondering, are there other kind of, do, are there other outbreaks in the community? That would be helpful for us to know about that are contributing to these uh, numbers? Or is it pretty mu- are we thinking that it is by and large the UVA students? And then I guess I'll uh, just say this, that if it is, uh, my understanding is the UVA students are all going to be gone after November 24th. They will be, they're, they're, well, there won't be any class or anything. And I think there, we, community would like them to go back to their home communities until the second semester. And so I'm wondering if, how would, how might that affect our, our timelines and, and what things look like?
I've, I've asked the question many times, is UVA, the numbers from them, the reason our numbers have gone up? I keep numbers from every day. I look at them at the last day of each month to see how many we had per month to see whether July was higher than August or, or whatever else. And yes, the numbers started going up about the time that the students came back. And, but, but the health department will say they are a factor. They're not the only reason. We're still getting community cases. But the students being here add to the numbers of people in our community and, and to the uh, the number of cases. The numbers that I, that are shared in the red, I agree, that is very confusing. Because it, when I first saw it, I thought it was saying 646 new cases. Well, I can pretty much tell you every day how many we've got, had for that day. But when looking at this, it is 14 days of cases based on 100,000 people in our community. Since we don't have 100,000, we only have little less than 50,000. So you can look for us, our cases over 14 days is about half of what this red number is. Like uh, yesterday, our red number was 646, where our number of cases over two weeks was 310 or something like that. So the, the number on the CDC chart is going to almost every time be about double. Because the 100,000 is about double for what Charlottesville's population is. Now you asked what will happen after the 24th of November. It won't show up anything for a while if UVA continues to have cases. It's not going to show a drop of this red number until we get 14 days in. Because this is looking at 14 days of cases. So it would take us, if we continue at the same rate we've been going, to, to 14 days after everybody leaves, for the number to drop much. It might drop some because some of our days would be lower. But we're looking at a 14 days accounting of cases. There's no averaging or anything in it. It's just purely counting cases.
Okay, who's next?
I, um, I just, I wanted to go back to the um, issue of virtual school and how that go- is going. Um, with respect to uh, attendance, I um, myself have been uh, called several times about my child's attendance. And I just wanted to know how attendance is going, if we have any numbers about percentages of students showing up? And um, if we're keeping data on that and what we're doing in the event that students are not coming to school.
I can answer the part, we are keeping data on it. I don't know whether Dr. King will have a better answer on that or if someone else. Dr. King, do you have a better answer?
Yes, we're keeping data on it, uh, school principals, as well as our data team. Um, Diana Sacra um, watches and has percentages from the principal's report. Um, the, the high school, Walker and um, Buford had really high 90, 98% um, scores. When I looked at it, I want to say the beginning of last week with that report. Um, but the feedback from the principals and um, it's just the, the level of participation. Um, we do look at being, uh, being present at school on time and all day. But we realize that there are going to be exceptions to that. And we have s- um, schools follow up with families, case by case basis, specific situations. Where if there's a time that a student isn't able to be present for a live session or, or if there are some activities or assignments that are able to be completed um, for those days. We follow up not only with phone calls and text messages and emails, but we do home visits. Um, we had a um, our high school principal, um, just this week went to a home to make sure that our student could get on um, Zoom classes. They shared, hey, we're having trouble getting on Zoom classes. We're getting their assignments in, um, but did the personal home visit. So principals, our social workers, our teachers are making sure we're meeting the needs of students to, so they can be present for school all day.
Just want to give a shout out to Mr. Cook and Ms. Thomas, who've both contacted me this week about my child. So we're good. Um, but I see that, so I just wonder if that's going to continue to be, um, you know, it's, I think it's interesting. Um, and, and hard. How is the elementary school doing?
They are doing well also. Um, I just did not have those numbers with, with Buford, the high school and Walker that stuck out um, to me. Because usually those are the areas.
Yeah.
But those, I, I just remembered.
Yep.
But very well also.
Okay, is that in our consent agenda report as it normally is the attendance numbers? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that on the consent agenda.
Let me take a view of that, Madam Chair.
Okay, you don't have to do that while we're doing this. I can look later. I want to make sure that it is in there if, as it normally is. Um, so I'm in there. Um, okay, so any other questions or comments about the COVID transition committee?
Can I ask one last question before we move on? I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
The um, the COVID committee, have we looked, have we talked about what our testing capacity is? I remember at some point we were talking about it and we were saying that the Thomas Jefferson Health District would cover the cost of testing for students or teachers. And I was just wondering if that isn't included um, somewhere in the return to school planning about testing and our capacity? And how, how, how we refer people out or, you know, what happens if you come in and your temperature is 101 or something like that?
We don't have a set plan at this point regarding testing. On Thomas Jeff- Jefferson Health District has been very collaborative with us, but there has been nothing set up about testing. And I think that will be something that the facilities group may look at because of mitigation factors to see what we can get worked out. And we can't tell them that's got to be done. We would need to see what capacity they have as far as testing goes. I know that the capacity has gotten better over the last few months. Um, and the amount of time it takes to get a test back has gotten better. But uh, we don't have anything firmly in place for that at this point.
Thanks. I want to say to you, Ms. Bryson Morrisburger, that has absolutely been uh, one of the focuses of our mitigation committee. Uh, we talked about it in detail yesterday. We're working with, um, trying to connect with some resources at the university to see what, uh, how we can. It really does depend on the timeline, like they can't offer us anything immediately. But certainly in the short term or medium term and long term, there may be some collaboration aspect or elements that we could take advantage of. Um, so we're still examining testing as a mitigation strategy. Um, it's not, uh, you know, the, the health district specifically does not recommend it for school districts. But I think um, our community would value that, at least some access to it. So that's where um, the commit, you know, the mitigation committee is working on that. Um, I also wanted to tell you a couple, like one of the other things that um, we talked about in mitigation was communication. Um, and our uh, nurse from Venable uh, mentioned, she's also in our, on our facilities committee. She mentioned that this is the time for families to get your flu shot. Um, that school is going to look a lot different no matter when we return to school. Um, and so it's, you know, we're going to be wearing masks, we're going to be distant, lunch is going to be different, things are just going to be different. So no matter when we pull the, whenever we decide to go return back in person, things are going to be different. And that we need to start looking at um, how to talk to our children about that. Um, but also we're going to just have very high expectations about hand washing and social distancing and mat, proper mask use. And you know, also getting your flu shot this year is really important. Um, so those are just, um, so we'll continue to, you know, I think communication strategy is also a mitigation strategy too. So that's, I, I, I suspect we're going to be working more on that in the coming weeks. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so um, I, um, I think that's the end of our agenda with respect to the information and action. Thank you to all our staff for everything you do on that. And the next item on our agenda is the um, comments from members of the community. And this time I'm going to try to remember to do my three minute, minutes, starting at the beginning. If you guys, um, Mr. Cuomo, is there anybody signed up?
Yes, um, I have Becca Saxon, um, who can unmute when ready.
Okay, Ms. Saxon, you have three minutes.
Good, uh, good evening, everyone. I hadn't actually been planning to talk tonight, but I think the pieces of the letter I sent to you all earlier uh, are important to share publicly since the conversation tonight on LGBTQ identities diverted the focus of the conversation from anti racism. These anti bias lessons were created to begin moving the school system for anti racism as part of the changing the narrative work. The goal is to affirm every student's multiple identities and center the voices and experiences of marginalized people as students explore systems of power and oppression. Multiple educators reached out to both me and the Charlottesville Education Association for guidance after seeing those lessons get removed. During those conversations, we learned that a fourth grade team had requested a one grade, one book reading of this book, Anti Racist by Tiffany Jewell. And that this request was denied because the book mentioned L- LGBTQ identities as part of personal identity. As a result of these conversations, the open letter I sent earlier today was drafted and circulated among teachers in support of community members. Because of our intentions to work internally to address these issues, the letter was not posted to the public and the media was not informed. It's still received almost 200 signatures. These decisions to censor lessons and materials are very concerning. The Charlottesville community has grown and changed significantly in the last three years. We are finally acknowledging the generations long cries from our black neighbors and friends who've been calling for more honest conversations and learnings in our classrooms about race and our difficult history regarding race. But any honest conversation about race must include the nuances that emerge when overlapping identities come into the light. We cannot teach honestly about racism. If we do not also acknowledge the ways in which all aspects of our identities work together to form our perspectives and experiences. We must also acknowledge how systems of oppression and power affect all portions of ourselves and our community. For this to happen, educators must have the authority and autonomy to select materials that recognize, affirm and celebrate every single member of their classroom communities. I'm glad that the lessons themselves have been returned to the lesson bank and that we can now focus energy on how to move forward constructively. At the end, I trust that you all incorporate many of the suggestions I made in the letter I sent earlier this afternoon. And I again, offer my support in any way uh, that may be welcome to the teachers, to the central office staff and to the school board as you go through this process. It's exciting work to see happening. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Saxon. I appreciate your comments. Um, next is who? Mr. Cuomo?
Um, I have, uh, the only other hand I see raised right now is Beth Ike.
Okay, Ms. Ike, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, thank you all for your time and your commitment to our kids. Please know how much we appreciate it. I'm sad to say the two topics I was hoping to better understand have not really been sufficiently explained. I guess I understand choosing not to reflect on the proposal, proposal of an early reopening, which had already been walked back. But the whole ordeal was so unnecessarily disruptive and stressful for all, I was hoping that we would hear at least an apology. On the removal of LGBT related content, I wanted to follow up on some of Ms. Bryson Morrisburger's comments. I too find Dr. Atkins' explanations confusing and lacking transparency. I was so grateful to hear a board member ask for greater clarity on these curricular changes. Ms. Perrier, I heard you loud and clear, but trust is an issue. There has been no admitting of mistakes. I was appalled to hear the way Dr. Atkins chose to respond to Ms. Bryson Morrisburger. To speak with such disrespect to anyone like that is hardly behavior becoming a superintendent. But to tell a board member, I'm sorry, you don't understand, and then basically refuse to be more clear, was an egregiously poor response. This board should not be okay with that. Lastly, I just wanted to echo the comments made earlier about map testing. If this is not something required by the state, if we cannot trust the data generated because of the very real changes the virtual environment proposes or that we have to um, contend with because of the fact that we're in a virtual environment, then why would we do this now? Um, I ask especially as a parent of a second grader. I watched um, her second grade teacher take the class through an exercise where they wrote on their whiteboards and then pulled their screens down so they couldn't see their screens. But what was on the whiteboard would be able to be reviewed. This was supposedly in preparation for map testing. It felt like a difficult exercise even as an exercise. I'm not exactly sure how it fit in, but um, it had me scratching my head earlier today. And then I really appreciated hearing the comments from the other parent and hope you guys consider not following through. Thank you again for everything. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Ike. Um, appreciate that. Um, who is next, Mr. Cuomo?
Yeah, Madam Chair, there are no other hands raised. Um, someone did make a comment that if the hand raise button is not available, they, if they just put a simple note in the chat, I can also use that as a way to acknowledge a time to speak.
So if you are unable to raise your hand, please put a little note in the chat and um, Mr. Cuomo will call on you. I'll probably give, you know, you an opportunity for like, I don't know, 45 seconds. Does that suit everybody? Just like making up rules as I go along. So um, yeah, 45 seconds-ish. And um, so I should play a song? Is that what?
No, you should sing a song.
I'm not singing. I'm, yeah, that would, yeah, no. Yeah, so interlude music and then um, yeah, we'll we'll just have some silence for a few seconds. Anybody showing up, Mr. Cuomo?
I see no hands raised and no comments in the chat box.
Perfect. Everybody get your comments ready for the next item. Okay, board members. I'm just going to go alphabetical. Okay, so um, Mr. Cuomo, anybody in the chat?
Uh, there's nobody at this time.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Thank you all for your comments. We do value them and um, uh, everybody, I do hope, it feels like everybody knows our email, but feel free to email us at schoolboard@charlottesvilleschools.org. We um, we see those and respond to those. Um, and thank you for all of your emails as well. Um, and so I think Mr. Bryant is first in the alphabet. It's kind of late, so I don't really know, but yeah, I'm going to go with Mr. Bryant right now.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Um, first of all, um, I heard a lot tonight. Um, I think the thing that stood out to me most um, were the parents of those students who perhaps may have felt disenfranchised in regards to those lessons being removed. And um, it reminded me of a time when um, I was teaching and there was a complaint about teaching Negro spirituals. And um, the administrator uh, questioned me about that and I was accused of teaching religious songs. And um, once I clarified, these were the songs that were in the Civil War debt book that was approved by the school board. Um, we moved on with the lesson. So in this case, um, I do appreciate those parents calling and expressing their concerns because we want, we know that we have a school, I know that we have a school system that's, that's open, opening and warming and friendly to all students. I taught them all over the years. Um, many students who were dealing with certain issues. Um, but we were able to move forward and and ingratiate these kids and make them feel welcome. So I am very, I was very pleased that those lessons were restored. Um, I was, I have to admit, I was taken aback. And um, but they were restored and uh, as Ms. Purrier said, we make mistakes and we move forward. Also, um, Dr. Atkins, um, immediately after that, shared a video with us. Um, I sat and listened very intently. And my response was that she has set the tone in us moving forward. The Equity Committee is, is work is going to be working hard and setting up training. I think that's going to be very important moving forward for everyone in regards to this issue. So that we can cover all of our bases and and the community members, um, their children feel, feel welcome in our school system. I think that is very important. Also, want to thank Dr. Atkins for leading the charge. Um, it's critical to have a strong superintendent that sets the tone for all of us. Um, central office staff, you are amazing. Uh, you've worked hard um, trying to cover all the bases so that we can safely open our schools for our children and staff members. Um, the COVID committee is extremely important because as a board, we're going to depend heavily on the information that they share with us. It's critical so that we, when we do open schools back uh, that uh, everyone will come into a safe environment. Um, so I do want to commend the COVID committee for their um, great work as well as central staff and Dr. Atkins. Um, we are moving forward in these uncertain times. We have to understand that we're in the unknown and um, we have to move it forward. Um, I will also thank the Equity Committee for their fine work. I'm hoping that um, we can move, can, we can move beyond this. Um, and continue to do the great work that the Charlottesville City Schools, our teachers, our amazing teachers, um, our staff members, um, and our hard-working students. God knows, if I was one of those students working virtual, I would have some issues because I like it up close and personal. So I want to thank our amazing students, everybody, the bus drivers, the folks who are delivering the meals in the community. Um, everybody working on, because as the old African proverb says, it takes a whole village to raise a child, and we are the village. So my hat goes off to everybody and I'm hoping that we can move beyond this little snafu and do the work that we've been asked to do.
Hey, um, so hopefully you're as lucky as I am to have a child deliver um, dessert to you. And um, Ms. Bryson Morseburger, you're next.
Okay, um, I'd just like to say uh, for my comments uh, that I hear the community and the concerns um, over the last month. And I think that um, we should really be clear and acknowledge that releasing um, a earlier return date than the one we acknowledged, you know, even if it's a conversation starter, was just not the best communication strategy because it alarmed people, it, people were panicked. And I just think like, just acknowledging to the community that it wasn't handled or it wasn't communicated in, in the way it should have been. Um, and that uh, I can understand their frustration. Um, I'd also like to add, I am still not clear about the LGBT curriculum and the whys and the hows and the policy that went into the decision and the reversal. Um, but I think that both of those two incidents create issues of trust and that, and transparency and that we can't gloss over the fact, you know, that we have to be honest in our community with our conversations and say that like, in both cases, it did take some pushback and some fighting to get clarification or to get the decision reversed. And that is worth acknowledging and not just glossing over. And lastly, I just want to say to the students, to the families and the community organizations that are urging us to come back face to face, I, that I hear you. Um, and I, we want to come back face to face and we also want to keep you and your family and your students and everyone safe. And um, I just don't want to do it in a way that we regret later, but that we're doing everything we can to get everyone back safely. And I'm sorry that, you know, virtual has been a struggle and that we'll continue to work together to make it, to get to where we need to be. Thank you.
You, Dr. Kraft, are you next in the alphabet?
Yes, I am. Well, I want to first thank uh, the public, those of you who spoke up at our meeting and those of you who have spoken up um, through emails to us and contacting us, just um, expressing your, your concerns. Um, you know, expressing when you're unhappy about things, expressing when, you know, when you are happy about things. And we've heard, um, we've heard lots from both ends, but particularly, you know, if there's something that um, you, you really do find egregious, that you, you do feel like you can reach out to the board. Um, that that's, we're here for that. And I appreciate those of you who um, have done that for us and to, for us. Um, and once again, just to say, I just, uh, I can never express enough how much I appreciate the work of the staff. I think we have such an extraordinary group of people working on uh, all of these issues, which are almost unbearably difficult and complicated. And um, um, you're, you're wonderful and I do appreciate you all the time. And I um, also want to appreciate um, our board chair, Ms. McKeever, for um, eating her dessert. Uh, no, for, really for being the face of the board, um, for many of these communications with the public. Uh, I think it takes a lot of time and and a lot of thought. It's not an easy task. And um, I think you've done a wonderful job of doing that on, on our behalf. And so thank you for that. Appreciate that. Um, and just a couple of things. One is that um, in terms of our, the timing of when we're making these decisions about what to do. Um, I think that, you know, families are thinking about, you know, the nine week, that, you know, the first nine weeks, the second nine weeks, and people are sort of thinking in those chunks of time. So I hope that we can um, come to some direction uh, so that people will begin to have a sense of what the second nine weeks is going to look like. You know, even if not all the details are worked out, I just hope that we can think about that, that that's how families are looking at this in terms of their timing and take that into account. And even if the board does need to meet before our next scheduled meeting in November, um, I hope we will do so. Um, if that would, you know, help to lay out a plan a little more clearly. And um, well, finally, I, this is, I had this weird, um, this, I flashed on this weird image of as, as we've all been talking back and forth, and I think there have been tensions and, you know, all of this kind of stuff. And I was thinking about these, I don't know if you know, these two big um, cement lions that are in New York City uh, by the big main library in Manhattan, and they're named patience and fortitude. Uh, they were given these names. And I was thinking, that's, you know, that's kind of what we're grappling with. And I think we all uh, really need to be reminded. We, we do need the fortitude to get through all of this stuff. We also need the patience to understand how stressed we all are, how afraid we all are, um, and how uncertain we all are about um, how this is all going to happen. This is nothing that we've ever experienced before. And so finally, I would just add a third lion called grace and uh, put grace up there as well. And so I hope that that's, that can guide how we um, work with each other and how we talk to each other and and um, deal with each other. So that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Kraft. I'm going to get this wrong. I'm going to go Ms. Purrier now. P before T.
Uh, thank you to everyone for all that you've done. Um, my first shout out goes to the COVID committee because um, I'm glad that uh, Dr. Atkins thought about all of these various insundry committees because they're doing the heavy lifting, they're doing the research, they're pulling it all together. And then we have to read it and we have to interpret it. Um, I understand how people may feel um, that trust has been broken. I understand that. I know how important trust is. All of us, like Mr. Bryant and Ms. Bryson Morrisburger and Mr. Wade have said, are looking forward to the day that our students can return. But there are a lot of things that go into making that happen. So we have to listen to Dr. Kraft and put patience first. And we have to acknowledge when we're right and when we're wrong. But if we are a part of a family, there are always going to be a little disgruntlement. There's always going to be a little dissension. But somehow we all come back together. And we may not understand everything at the time. And sometimes it will become clear and sometimes it won't. But I don't know anyone that was here 100 years ago. My friend that was 103 died at 103, and we hadn't gone into pandemic then. So I want us to use the guiding, guiding principle of patience. And I feel that if we can be patient, trust will be restored. It'll take a while. I understand that. And I think everybody around this table, around, if you're sitting around a table at a desk or Zoom, you understand that. For some of us, it may be a little difficult to accept an apology, but maybe that will come. But please understand that when you look across the Commonwealth and when you look across the country of all that is happening in public education, all the targets and daggers that are thrown, even with our missteps, even with our hiccups, even with our frustrations and not understanding. Look at where we are, look at what we're doing, and look at some other school divisions. And all of us know people in other divisions.
Hey, Ms. Torres, I think you're up.
Okay, thank you. Um, quickly, I just wanted to mention a couple of things that that I've done and participated in um, here recently and and um, one was, um, last week, um, I had the opportunity to attend um, the 2020 BSBA Legislative Advocacy Conference. So this was a webinar. Um, I apologize because I meant to send just an uh, email update to board members as far as some of the topics that were, were covered, but it was very informative. Um, and quickly just, um, they, they did talk about um, collective bargaining, um, as that pertains to House Bill 582. Um, so there was a lot of information on that that was very informative. Um, they talked, um, they had um, the Commissioner Rosen Worsel, I believe her name is, from the FCC, which talked about our digital future. Um, talked about E-rate programs and just equitable digital learning. So that was also very informative. And then we had our uh, 2021 General Assembly preview of, of hot topics. So I have some information and I'm happy to share that out. Um, another thing that um, I attended this, uh, attended via Zoom this week was um, our first CAC meeting. And um, just to announce that there will be the next meetings that are scheduled are November 18th, February 24th, and April 21st. Um, and um, And there was a pretty good attendance. I don't remember what the numbers were. So it was, it was noted that I think having the Zoom option really allowed more people to potentially attend and participate in that than potentially hand, having that in person. So I think that's something that we all noted and it was, it was a nice turnout. Just as a question, I mean, we heard a couple of times some concerns and questions about map testing come up. So I would just love to pose to whoever in, in central office, if we could have an opportunity maybe to have some more discussions about what types of assessments are being scheduled, when they're being scheduled, especially in light of the current environment of, of virtual and, and what we're looking to gain from that. So I'm just out of curiosity, would love maybe some follow up on that, if that's appropriate. Also wanted to acknowledge just all of the comments from the community members. And, and as Chairwoman McKeever so graciously stated, you know, just to acknowledge the hurt that people felt, whether it be students, staff, family members. And, and as was said by Ms. Marshall, you know, I, just to validate the lived experiences of every person, I mean, that is so important, I know, to all of us. So thank you for stating that. And I look forward to receiving your letter and with, with ongoing recommendations. And also, thank you, Ms. McKeever, for your leadership. And thank you to central office staff for all of the work, putting all of this together. And that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Wade.
Thank you. I'm going to keep it brief because I know we still have another meeting to go to. I just really want to echo what Sheri said in that she, that to acknowledge the, the great staff and all the work that they've been doing. I know they've been attending a lot of meetings. And just for you and your leadership and responding to the emails and just kind of guiding us through just a very difficult year. I know that you weren't expecting all this when you took on chairmanship back in, in January. And also the fact that, you know, we've been willing to, to meet again for, you know, if we have to make a decision before the November meeting. And I'm going to just kind of take a, a different tack on, you know, the issue with the, the curriculum. I, I want to commend Rosa and staff really, you know, listening to the board and the public and, and, and making the change. I didn't, I didn't see any hesitation at all in staff, you know, making the changes. Maybe I missed some emails, but I just want to commend her and the staff. This is what I've known that, that, you know, we're a very inclusive community. So those are my comments and I'm back.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. I wanted to say thank you to our staff who are helping so us with the COVID committee. That it is just a lot of work. And the data that they continue to bring to the committee is extraordinary. I feel really grateful for where, at least the facilities and mitigation committee, subcommittee is right now. And I hope that the elementary and middle school, high school committees also feel at least empowered to kind of present options. And I, I think maybe we should just schedule a meeting already, like the third week in October. I feel like there's enough consensus about that, that maybe we just have a update on the committee work and virtual school at that time. I just think that as a school board, that's a huge priority. And, and even talking to you all individually over the past week and a half or so, it became very clear that there's just a, you know, there, like, it's hard to get information out to you all in the, in the kind of in-depth way that you want it. So maybe a committee meeting, I mean, maybe a school board meeting in the middle of October after the 14th would benefit this board to kind of just keep them up to date on, on where we are in virtual school and in the committee. I want to tell the public, A, to get your flu shot and B, to vote. I said, you can vote early. Vote early in person, absentee, however. I think I said in July, and, you know, this little, and I, I've said this in a couple of our emails. Sometimes I'm not that great at the emails, so I apologize. But I, I, I remember I said recently in emails that we, as a local little school board, are having to make these really complex decisions and plans just because we have been failed at the national level in controlling this virus. And the mixed messages that we have received over and over and over again. We literally just got guidance from the CDC this week as for school divisions. It is like October. So this little school board in this little town with, in little schools, with our, you know, mighty but small staff trying to make these decisions is, it's too much to ask, but we are doing it and we will continue to do it. But we have to make our decisions and we've had to make our decisions and we will continue to make our decisions. We are not doubling down on any decision. Everything is on the table. And I just really feel strongly that the, we haven't even begun to see the community spread that UVA is bringing to our community. You can see that every day, the CDC guidance, it stays in the red for one of those, but the other parameter, it changes. So we have to, metrics that constantly change. So I wish, and everybody I know around this table wants to go back to school in person. That's what our teachers do best, that's where our students do best. And I'm, I'm really sorry that we have not been able to do that. But I really feel like if, if our schools are safe, our community is safer. And I just think it's so urgent that we continue to protect our community. So obviously, that was a little soapbox. And thank you for letting me say something like that. But it's really important and urgent that we vote to have sensible leadership in this country. So we can just have some path forward that is cohesive so that little tiny school boards are not making these big decisions. So to move away from that, I'm going to, I think, go to the next item on the agenda. I think, Dr. Atkins, you have the superintendent's report, comments?
I do have superintendent comments, Ms. McKeever. Thank you so much. Want to say thank you to our staff. Again, I will echo everyone saying that we have an amazing staff, tiny, but amazing. So thank you so much for all of the work that you have done to get us through the summer, get us open, get us back to engaging in the teaching and learning process. So thank you so much. Thank you again to the COVID committee. So I, I have some choices right here that I could go into this whole dialogue about how we got to where we are and, and what policy I followed and how I followed that policy in response to any of what we've heard tonight. I'm going to say thank you for what we've heard. Thank you for every person who has made a comment. And thank you for all the text messages, email messages that have come. I can tell you when we started the COVID committee, the COVID-19 Advisory Committee, it evolved out of the last board meeting. And in my leadership, the purpose of it was because we built trust. We built trust in opening the schools. We pitched it to the teachers and said, tell us what you want, how you want it, how to shape it, and let's get school open in a way that works for everyone. And I felt that we had built the trust. So the COVID Advisory Committee was based on that trust. And walking into that committee, there was never an intent to scare people, to frighten people, to get them to anything other than continuing to build on that trust that we had and starting point of discussion. So I'm glad we are where we are with the COVID Advisory Committee. They, they're committees that are working right now. They have the ball in their hands, they're shaping that ball, they're reshaping that ball, and they're going to come back with an amazing report. The elementary committee, the secondary committee and the facilities committee, they're going to put all of that information and come back on October 14th with a report. And I just want to say thank you for all of your innovation and what's going to happen. We come to work every day wanting to make this the best school division possible, following every guideline that we have. And for our public and our teachers and our staff, oftentimes what you see is the very end of a protracted, long process in which we are making decisions or finalizing decisions. Sometimes when you see the end of that, it looks good and sometimes it doesn't look good. But do know that our mission in this school division is to embrace, to celebrate and to value every one of our students and every one of our staff members. And to embrace the conversations that we have ahead of us, difficult conversations and difficult processes. And so, thank you to everyone for your input. And there's a small piece that I say for me personally. Ms. Bryson Morrisberger, if I in any way spoke to you in any manner that was not professional, for that, I apologize. My mom taught me a long time ago how to be professional and how to be polite. And I think I try in every way that I can to do that. So, may not agree with you, but I sure wouldn't disrespect you. So thank you. And thanks to all of the board for everything that you've done.
Hey, okay, so now we're on the, the back of the page, super excited about that. And I just want to, because it's before the wrap up, I was wondering if anybody would mind if we have any consensus about whether to have a, another meeting in the middle of October or if we should just do that as an on and as needed basis, as if we could just get some discussion or consent, thought about that.
Ms. McKeever. I don't have a problem in having another meeting, but I'm not sure that the third Thursday is when to do it. Because if we go back to what Dr. Baptist said, the COVID committee has their assignment that is due on the 14th of October. So I'm just wondering, man, I can't, I can't speak for anybody. We all have lives, we, we've got lots going on. But I just feel that if we've asked our committee to report back on one day and then tried to compile all of that to meet the next day, I don't know. I mean, logistically, I just don't know how that works.
Okay, how about, okay, let's just take the date off the table. Any, because we could easily do it the 22nd. It, again, if, if nobody wants to do this, that's fine. I'm just asking, okay. Do you want to have a meeting, yes or no?
Could we, well, I have a question. Could we wait until the 14th to, to, could we decide right after that committee meeting about having another meeting? Maybe we could set up something tentatively, but I think we won't know whether it would be useful to have it until we, until that committee comes back on the 14th?
Well, we can literally do anything we want. So A, yes. B, the, I think that given the amount of data that you all want as a board, not just from the committee, but in general, that communicating with you all that on a regular basis can be overwhelming right now. Normally, I don't have a problem with that, but as chair, like commuting, communicating to you guys all individually can be prob, can be difficult. And I just think like, having this central, okay, well, on the 22nd, you guys will learn all of this and it'll be like, everybody's on the same page. So that's also one suggestion for, that I have, is that there's a lot of information happening right now, things are changing every week. And it's just hard to keep you guys up to date all the time about that. So yeah, I, I, we could easily schedule something at a later time, but I just wanted to at least take a little straw poll to see if there's any consensus around having a meeting lead after the committee meeting and after staff have had an opportunity to kind of dissect that. So, um, all those, unless there's any other comments about that, I'm just going to do like a little straw poll hand showing, okay? So yes, to a meeting, middle of October. Okay, so Dr. Atkins and I will work together to make that happen and useful and, and not onerous on them. So thank you for that. And so, for that, I think we're going to go to work session wrap up. I think Dr. King is in charge of that.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. I noted an update on the equity training as well as a follow up, which I took as maybe an email follow up on assessment types that we'll use. And those are the only two that I captured.
Okay, is there any, anybody else have any thoughts about the, about the wrap up? Okay. Upcoming meetings, interesting. So I know we'll probably have one in the middle of the month, so keep your eye on your emails. And then I don't.
November 5th.
Thank you so much. And then November 5th is our next official board meeting. And don't forget to vote. And yeah, so that's all I have for the upcoming meetings. And any other comments or questions or thoughts? Okay, I really appreciate all you all. We're going to go into closed session in a minute, but for the moment, we're going to stand adjourned if I hear no objections. Okay, great. So Leslie just sent us an email about how to get into closed session. So we'll go, do we have to do the, do a motion?
Yeah, I'll display all that when we get in the other meeting.
Okay.
You'll have to, we'll log out of here and log into that one.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, we're going to go there now.